So I'd like to call to order this meeting on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one of the Boulder Valley Board of Education. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Kephart.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
I think you're on mute, Lisa. We can't hear you, Lisa. Well, we know you're here.
Sweeney Moran is the visual present.
Okay.
Here.
Okay. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge.
Allegiance to the flag.
Yeah, America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged life. I also just wanted to add before we move on that we have school board elections next November, and this is an opportunity for people who are interested in joining the school board to learn about the role and the position and to understand what the timelines are. So we are hosting two sessions if you're interested in becoming a candidate for the school board, and those dates are March ninth at eleven thirty. These are virtual sessions, and the other date is March twenty-ninth at six thirty. And so that's the time when we'll have a Q and A. I'll just give a brief overview. Other board members will most likely join if they're available, and you can find out more about the position. And then what we do have some of the dates around the election, which is good news. So just for those of you who are already know that they're going to run and you're wondering what those dates are, July twenty-third is the last day to notify Laura Schaefer if you want to participate in the election, correct, Laura, to notify you?
I believe that's the date that I need to notify the clerk's office that we're going to participate in the election.
Oh, got it. Sorry. And then, and we are going to participate in the election most likely. The next is August fourth is the first day a candidate for the office of a school district director can circulate a nomination position. You would get that nomination petition from Laura Schaefer. All right. It's a little different school board. You don't go to your city or municipality to get information. You go to the board secretary who organizes our election. August twenty-fourth is when you need to sign, I'm sorry, August twenty-seventh is the last day for a candidate of the school district to file a nomination petition. So those, that's your basic timeline if you're interested or if anyone you know is interested. The three seats that are up are my seat, which is District B, and that is North Boulder and little parts of Central Boulder. And the maps are on our website, by the way, and two seats are up for reelection. One is for District C, which is currently held by Donna Myers, and the other is District, oh kitty, help me, which letter are you? G?
F.
F. I don't think that's a G.
I should unmute. F. And Tina, could you just mention for people who don't know what it means to participate or not to participate in the election?
Gosh, I don't know.
Because we're not going, well, if we...
Oh, I see what you're saying. If we had uncontested seats, we would not participate in the election. Sorry about that. So if there are only one candidate for each of the three seats I just mentioned, then we would in fact not be a part of the election. Thank you, Kitty. So that is the basic rundown, and we can talk a little bit at these presentations about how tracer works, which is how you track candidate information expenditures and contributions to campaigns. So that, I just wanted to mention that for those of you who are interested. The other thing is you can email any of us, and we are happy to talk to you about our experiences. I've already spoken to a couple candidates and really do encourage you to email us individually or as a board to set up time and find out more about this experience. I personally found it to be incredibly rewarding, and I am term limited, so I will not be on this board past November. All right. So the next item we have today is the superintendent's report and the COVID report. I'm saying those together because we tend to have been moving pretty smoothly from one to the other, but Rob, do you want to give us the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. For this evening's superintendent report, I want to highlight the three resolutions that are on our agenda today because I think that all three of these resolutions take positions on, I think, important topics, both at the local, state, and federal level. The first resolution is in support of increased IDEA funding, and just for the public to understand, as we think about the dollars that we get to support our special education programs, including both federal and state funds, we receive about thirteen million dollars, and to provide those services for those students is forty-two point eight million dollars. This resolution encourages advocacy at the federal level to provide at a minimum forty percent of funding for IDEA, and so this is something I'm very much in support of. Certainly a weakness, I think, and something that a lot of school districts across not only just the state but the country are definitely in support of and would be a great opportunity for President Biden and new Secretary of Education Cardona to take up this cause for us. The second resolution to discuss is the Resolution on State Assessment, and I think that, you know, this has been a hot topic in our state. This resolution asks our state to take a pause on the CMAS testing this year, and I would say that certainly we value accountability, we value information. I don't know that there has ever been a year in public education where the cost to give these tests is going to be higher, and I define the cost as loss of instructional time. We know how valuable our in-person instructional time has been, and we are getting into a place where we're able to write more of that than we've had all the entire school year, and the idea that we would have to begin to sacrifice that to give an assessment, that's not a diagnostic assessment but a criteria reference assessment. We're still going to have to do diagnostic assessments, and so we feel like, given the choice, the idea that we would preserve some of that instructional time is the right choice. And so that will be a resolution the board will be taking action on this evening. And then the following is a topic that is, I think, incredibly pressing and important, and it's a resolution in regards to high potency marijuana products. And so I've actually had to do a little bit of research. I didn't know that much when this issue was brought to me. I know that I see Dr. Ravina shaking his head, and I think that a lot of our health experts in the, in the, in the community will be joining us on the, on the idea of the products that our kids are getting their hands on, and I've heard firsthand from principals that have such a high level of THC is having long-lasting negative impacts on their, on their physical, on their physical being, on their mental state. We are in full support of legislation or any legislation that would address this and certainly support this resolution. So three, three great resolutions on our agenda tonight that I just wanted to quickly highlight before we jump into our updates with our health team and regarding the pandemic. And so I believe at this point Randy is going to pull up the slide deck to move right into that presentation smoothly, Tina.
Okay, yeah, unless anyone had questions for Rob. So, we can, we can talk about the resolutions because they're on the agenda. Okay.
Absolutely, and I'm going to turn the presentation over to the team that looks like Margaret is queued up and ready to go.
Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board and the public. Here to share an update on our COVID nineteen update. So I'll start with some attendance, next slide. Thanks, Randy. So one, just like to celebrate that our preschoolers came back in the beginning of February, phase four. You can see all those happy faces back, all wearing masks, which we're really excited about. Every time that we have kids that are able to come back to school, that is incredibly exciting. Very quickly, I'll go over the attendance rates, which we send to the board typically that comes out at the end of the week, and we have last week's numbers now. So we are still seeing about a point two percent absence rate, which is hardly any student in person, and about a point three rate with our online students connecting, participating. So overall, twenty-seven percent of our students are in home learning, and seventy-three percent of our students are on, I just said that backwards, I'm sorry, twenty-seven are online, seventy-three percent are in person, and that number goes down over elementary, middle, and high. So we start to see a little bit of a trend downward, seventy-seven percent, seventy-four percent, and sixty-eight percent in person. But we are very excited to have our students back and the connections that they're making, so we'll hope to continue in that vein. I would like to hand it over to Stephanie Faren, who'll be giving us our vaccine update.
Hi, thanks very much, Margaret. Good evening, everyone. I'm really thrilled to talk a little bit about our COVID vaccination plan here in BVSD. We've been able to partner with Boulder Community Health right down the street from us, so we're very excited about that. BCH is going to be hosting BVSD-only vaccination clinics on Saturdays, the first Saturday, this coming Saturday, February the thirteenth, and they're planning to do a thousand vaccines that day for us. They have been doing huge vaccination clinics for the community and for their staff, the one A and one B groups, for weeks now, and have a really wonderful system in place and are being, are really able to move people through. Everybody has appointments. It's a very nice, managed, orderly system. We hope and they hope that if vaccine supplies continue to come in, that they'll be able to do a thousand staff every weekend from now, you know, next, through the next three weekends, which should enable us to get all of our student-facing staff vaccinated by the end of February. They've also made sure that we have availability to get folks in. If they can't make it to a Saturday clinic, they're working with us directly, one-on-one, to make sure folks are able to get in during the week as well. Our process, next slide. Thank you. Our vaccination phases are, we started with one B dot one, which used to be called above the line, our moderate-risk healthcare workers, nurses, healthroom staff, our special education paras. As you know, they all started getting vaccinated around the beginning, mid-January. I believe they started on the eleventh, and we had additional appointments for them on the thirteenth and the nineteenth. A lot of those folks are now going in and getting their second shot, so that's wonderful. We're really glad to see that happening. And our one B dot two group, our educators and other student-facing staff, will be able to start, like I mentioned, this Saturday. Our first group that is eligible are our ILC teachers, staff sixty-plus that are in person and student-facing, and then we move into our second group, which is also broken out by ages. And right now, I believe we've sent invites to all of Group One and into Group Two as well. And then our third group will be any employee who is on an exemption right now and is able to come in and work after they've completed their second dose of vaccine, and they'll be able to work this school year. We will include them in our vaccine process as well. And then the next slide is really quickly, a timeline, a projection for you to see kind of how we anticipate this rolling out and how long this will take. You can see for our one B dot two group, like I mentioned, they'll start this Saturday, the thirteenth. Over the next three weeks, they'll be having their first dose, and then starting on March thirteenth, we'll move into the second dose for Group One, Group Two, and Group Three. You'll also see on this slide that, you know, from March thirteenth all the way through until April tenth, well, our staff will be building that full immune response that is needed for the full second dose of vaccine, and then a two-week period after that to be fully immunized. So we anticipate that we will have all of our student-facing staff fully vaccinated and through that two-week period by April tenth, which is really exciting for us again, and we just cannot thank BCH enough for that partnership with us. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Randy to talk a little bit about the process.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have been working very hard to try to make sure that our employees are aware of the process that we have and ensure that they're able to take part in this. As you can imagine, with vaccinations, there's a lot of questions, and so I do want to give a bit thank you to our public health partners as well as our partners at BCH that have been willing to join us. We've had two, what we call Weekly Wake Up, their livestream for employees that we hold on Monday mornings, bright and early at seven o'clock in the morning, but we've had really good turnout from folks that are, have tuned in and asked great questions. These are a couple quotes that we've gotten on social media and email, just in regards to their appreciation for that show and excited about a smooth rollout. Of course, as you may know from watching the news this weekend, that hasn't been necessarily the case everywhere. It's, you know, a little bit, there's a scarcity of supply for these vaccines, and so definitely as, as the educators have become eligible for this, and even before that, as doses have become available and opened up to educators, there's been a rush for those, those doses. And so we're really excited to have these sessions where everybody can sort of plan and know that they're coming up for them, real planned effort to make sure that they've got that available to them. And again, we're continuing to communicate. Today, we sent out another email, just making sure that they have the latest information in regards to logging in and all that kind of thing. So I will turn it over to Dr. Prespo.
Thanks again, Randy. So I just want to share some of the updates. As you know, one of, this slide comes up pretty regularly as we think about planning for the foreseeable future. So certainly working through our spring rites of passage, a huge shout out to our high school principals and Michelle Devery, Executive Director, Southwest Network. They've been needing to coordinate what that looks like, obviously looking at the most conservative options available as well as expanding to provide more opportunity for spectators and things like that as time allows. Additionally, we have expanded, and we talked a little bit about this during the last update, we have done a little bit of our expansion, not only with our PK that started last week, but also our Monday drop-in, and we're starting to see our students come in for that component, which has been helpful for drop-in as well as for having a place to be during that month, those Monday hours. We're also, as you know, looking ahead for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and certainly continuing to plan, which we typically would do at this time of year, but certainly with the pandemic, have taken other, other considerations into account. And then the last piece for us is the catch-up plan, which I'll be coming in next week during a board meeting to share some of our information around that. Super excited about the partnerships that we've developed and some of our existing partners definitely willing to work with us and excited to share that as we move forward, and hope that we'll have more and more exciting information around our students returning as, as possible through health parameters. So with that, I'll take the next slide, and one of the things as we talk about twenty-one, twenty-two, I just want to share that, as we shared in the past, we'll have in-person learning options for PK twelve, which will include a hybrid model if students are out of the building or if there's a remote learning necessary. One of the things that I want to clarify is that our goal is to have our students back to school face-to-face, but we also know that we need to plan ahead, so we want families to know that we are ready. If a student has to quarantine or if there is something that happens that we need to regulate the classroom, we certainly are able to do that. Additionally, based on our interest from parents and the connectedness to in-person, I mean, virtual learning, we've developed, and I want a huge shout out to the BU staff and Eric Moroi and our communications department because they literally have made this and enrollment. They literally have made this fly. We've had a number of parent meetings for our LINK program. You have, tomorrow is another day that you can sign up for the LINK program for families that are interested in doing a centralized online learning environment, so the students will have more face-to-face, virtually face-to-face connection, and, and we're working on what that plan would look like. We've had those parent meetings and some really great questions that have come from that, and I'll share some of those, including, will my student be connected to a teacher on a regular basis? Will there be mixed classes so that they have access still to their advanced classes? All of those things are possibilities, and frankly, the reason that those are so possible is because we've had Boulder Universal for a really long time, and those individuals are experts in their field and are able to provide exactly what our students need in a virtual world, K eight, while still keeping them connected to their schools and to their experience. And like I said, we'll still have Boulder Universal. Another question that's come up is families are concerned just about having to make the decision so early. Please know, we'll work with our families. We're working to get preliminary numbers to make sure that there's an interest in the program, to make sure that we're headed in the right direction, and those open enrollment requests are what help guide our work. So please feel free to reach out to Eric Moroi and his staff. They provide incredible information and updates, and we will keep you posted on what that enrollment looks like over the next couple of weeks. Thanks very much, Randy.
I think Dr. Anderson is taking it from here.
I am. We're getting ready to introduce Jeff Sayak and Boulder County Public Health, but before we do that, just, just a couple of things, a couple of thank yous. First of all, Boulder Community Health, thank you to their team that has helped us in an incredible way. We're so excited that our, our teachers will be getting vaccinated, starting this Saturday, a thousand of them being able to get vaccinated Saturday. Just been an incredible partner, has stepped up with us, so thank you so much to Boulder County Public Health. Again, continued thanks to Boulder County Public Health, who's here again this evening to give you all an update and all of their support, and as this board knows, and as I've said time and time again, it's their guidance that's helped us make the decisions in regards to what to do during this pandemic, and so just appreciate them. And again, thank the governor for all of his work and efforts in regards to testing, providing the free testing that we're able to provide within our community through COVID Check Colorado, and the other things that he's working very hard to help support school districts, so we're thankful for that. Our educators and staff have just been incredible. You know, as I, as I think about how this pandemic is playing out in communities across our country, I'm so proud of the Boulder Valley School District. We've come together, we have in-person learning options, we're working hard to increase those options. I'll talk about that in a moment, and I'm just incredibly proud of everybody working together to make that a reality. And so just thank you to educators, school staff, and community. And board members, before Jeff comes on board, I think that, you know, there are some in our community that are asking, okay, it looks like things are headed in the right direction. When are you going to let us know when you're going to bring back kids more for in-person learning? I think that's a fair question. At this point, looking at the calendar and as you, as we shared with you, our vaccination projection slide, which was slide five in the presentation, we feel like that's based on the numbers that we're getting and where we're headed by, the end of February is when we would have all of our educators with their first dose. We think it's appropriate that following week, March sixth, to come back and inform the board and the community, as long as those things go well, of our plans to increase, increase in-person days for our families. I think that there's a lot of unknowns that can happen, and if I've learned anything during the pandemic, it is just to make sure that, that you're using the information that you have. All signs point to March sixth as making really great announcements, but I think that with that being a month away, and that the second dose being, we're projecting it would be till the end of March before our educators would have their second dose and then be vaccinated, and then ten days after that where they'd be fully immune, we feel like March sixth is a good timeframe to bring that information back to the board. And so with that, I know that we have Jeff and others here from Boulder and Broomfield. Actually, I think Broomfield Public Health is going first, and so if we could turn that slide over to them and welcome, Holly, and thank you for being here.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us again. I will share my screen. Everybody hear me? All right. Okay, I'm Holly Lander. I'm the Public Health Nursing and Epidemiology Manager, and Dr. Ravina is our medical director, so he represents both, both Boulder and Broomfield County, so we get to collaborate a lot together. So just to share some overall updates and in terms of, you may have already heard in the news, so I'll just kind of do this as a quick recap, but the, a part of COVID is constantly reassessing and figuring out how do we need to tweak things, and, and part of that tweaking and making sure we're making the best judgment calls in terms of safety and restrictions that we need in place. The dial, we've updated it, the state has updated to two-point dial to two-point O, and so it's just changing some of the parameters in the different categories that we're watching for in terms of positivity rate and hospitalization, and in order to be quicker to respond in terms of shifting, if it needed, to a different level, to a different color, we are going to look at a seven-day metrics instead of a fourteen-day metrics going forward, and so it helps kind of pull in some tighter metrics for, like for example, the positivity rate in terms of our yellow and orange, as well as takes into consideration other counties that have a much smaller population, as well as just allowing for some other flexibility with some of the capacity levels that we've changed. And so this is effective already, it was as of this past weekend. So where does that put Broomfield County? So we are currently in, in level yellow, and I'll go through these kind of highlights in terms of where our positivity rate is. So in general, and kind of how I shared last time as well, we're almost in this kind of just staying kind of fairly steady, so we just kind of fluctuate slightly up or slightly down. So our positivity rate is at four point eight percent currently, and our case incidence is at, for a seven-day window now is how we're, how we'll be tracking this, so a hundred forty-nine cases per hundred thousand. So we're, again, kind of staying fairly steady and hopeful to kind of continue to see this kind of downward trend as we move along. In terms of just, again, the dial two-point O, just to show you quickly the kind of parameters in terms of what we're looking at with new cases, between a hundred to three hundred in that seven-day window, that our positivity rate doesn't go higher than seven point five percent, and that, you know, in terms of where we're monitoring in terms of hospital capacity and beds used and ICUs. So that, that just gives you a quick snapshot of the, of the different colors, of the different levels. Other things that this impacts and helps in terms of, as we continue to move forward in Broomfield County, our businesses and facilities can operate at fifty percent capacity now in this level, and the library will continue to operate at fifty percent capacity. Other events, like the Broomfield Auditorium, is able to increase the fifty percent capacity for in-person events and continues to still utilize that, that live on-stream media as well. The Polder Direct Center and the Broomfield Community Center will operate at fifty percent capacity, up to fifty people per room, and then we are continuing to build up our back-to-businesses that are certified businesses in terms of showing that they're, they have all the search safety protocols in place to keep patrons safe as well as staff safe, and so one criteria that, in terms of being able to operate at even one lower level, is, is once we hit that goal of seventy percent of Coloradans, seventy percent that are, and older are vaccinated across the whole state. So that's, that's a target we're, we're getting closer and closer to and excited about that. And, and then organized sports can operate in groups of twenty-five, and that's not including the coaches and officials, and then indoor dining does also, then up to fifty people without, without the distancing calculator, and then different calculation is a hundred fifty with the calculator. This is just kind of a quick visual of just showing, we're again, kind of in that steady, steady area in terms of our total positive cases and number hospitalized and our deaths and our positivity rate over, over the two-week trend. And then I know we've heard a lot about vaccines already, so I'll just kind of highlight again, we as a county are also working on that one B two group, so we are also working with our child cares, all the different child cares, our private schools, our public schools, and, and we'll be looking to add our sixty-five and sixty-nine as well. We are still very much still identifying some healthcare workers that still need to be vaccinated, as well as our seventy, seventy and older population as well, and we are constrained by the amount of vaccine that we do get in terms of each, each week what we get allocated to our county. So this is just a visual of the phases as we move through. So one A is, you know, we feel like that's completed in terms of all the hospital workers, that highest, highest risk exposure, and we're also happy to report that all of our long-term care facilities, two of them have, have completed their second doses, and another, a third one is scheduled later this month, and so that is also great news to share. We are nearing, getting closer to having other healthcare workers that are identified in one B, nearing their vac, either getting the, starting their vaccination or completing it, and we have about over eleven thousand six hundred doses that have been administered in Broomfield, for Broomfield residents in general. And in terms of just kind of who has been vaccinated, this is a quick snapshot in terms of looking at race and ethnicity as well as our different age brackets, and we're really happy to share that we've been making great progress with that seventy-plus residents, and so sixty-two percent of Broomfield, seventy and older residents have, have received at least one dose of the vaccination, and about eighty percent of doses administered have gone, sorry, have gone to people who have identified as white, non-Hispanic, so we are... And so 62% of Broomfield, 70 and older residents have received at least one dose of the vaccination. And about 80% of doses administered have gone, sorry, have gone to people who have identified as white, non-Hispanic. So we are providing vaccine clinics, we're partnering with our pharmacies, we're working in collaboration with the different hospitals as well as trying to provide some onsite locations as well to help with access. And just on the forefront, we're hopeful and excited about Johnson &amp; Johnson. They are scheduled for an FDA review at the end of the month, February 26th. And we're also hopeful about some additional vaccine that will be coming in through the Biden Administration, through some of the federal allocation programs. So we are hoping that we will start to get consistently more and more vaccine to help vaccinate more of the population. And this is just our website for more information. And I will stop sharing mine. I think Jeff, you're going to take over now.
Yes, thank you so much, Helene. And thanks, board members and Rob. I just want to also really emphasize the appreciation of the partnership between the school district and Broomfield. We have worked so very closely through this entire thing, and it makes us successful when it comes down to these planning efforts. So thanks to both of you and thanks, Helene. You've actually helped me because you covered a couple of slides that I won't have to cover on mine. So thanks for going first tonight. I wanted to give a couple of key messages upfront. This comes from the Colorado School of Public Health report. As you all know, they run predictions on a weekly basis. I'm going to talk about some of those projections that they run tonight in the slides. But I do want to highlight just a few things. This number is getting better than what I was reporting before. About 1 in 149 people now are having, can spread the disease. And this is at a statewide level. The number in Boulder County is a little bit higher than this. So we're a little bit better than the statewide average. But it's important to use this number because this, people travel across the state. And this still represents a lot of virus in our community. And that's what I don't want folks to forget is as we move into this time where we're going to be opening things up a little bit more, we still need to make sure that we focus on those really important strategies like masking and maintaining six feet distance. They're going to help us have this number continue to go up, which represents less infection in our community. So we're getting better, but we still have a little way to go.
Hey, Jeff. I don't know if you're trying to show slides, but I don't believe we see them right now.
You know why? Because I didn't share them. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate that. I think that's a first for me. I think that's a first for me. So the only thing you didn't see is this. I was just on an introductory slide, so I'll leave that up there for a second so people can see that. But our hospital cases are continuing to go down. Our new cases are continuing to go down and our deaths are continuing to decline, which is a good thing. When, I'm going to talk about transmission control measures and how those will help us as we move forward. And there's going to be a couple graphs I show that talk about, again, the projections from the Colorado School of Health relative to this. And the last one is again, just a reaffirmation that as vaccine gets out into our community more and more and more, we can't let down our guard of masking and social distancing. That's going to be really important as we move through the summer months. So this is the dial for Boulder. And you can see that I don't need to cover the things that Helene talked about. So thank you, Helene. So here's our numbers. All three of our indicators are looking pretty good. You're going to see a similar thing when I go through the data, stabilized data in terms of where we are now as we go through these slides. This is the metro data that I've shown you. You can see downward decreasing trends. We've had a bit of a slowing of the trends that are decreasing, but they're all still very downward and have been progressing exactly as we had hoped. This is the number of cases. And what I wanted to highlight here that I'll start to show on our slides as we move forward is just the light blue cases are the CU-associated cases. And you can see they've stayed pretty consistent throughout this month. We know we have students that are moving back in this week and that classes start back on the 15th, I believe, of February. So we'll continue to track and report this. I want to say real quickly, we have the exact same system that we had set up at the end of the fall with CU again. We have a very strong system in place, great coordination, and we'll continue to support each other as we move forward into this spring period. This is the graph that I've showed you each week. It's our age groups and it's the trend in seven-day incidents. And we have switched our graphs instead of tracking 14-day incidents to seven-day incidents. So it's more consistent with the changes that are made at the state. But you can see we have very low incidence, especially in our populations of the 0 to 9 and the 10 to 17. They remain low, which is great. This is our five or seven-day average of new cases in Boulder County. Again, want to keep that number nice and low. We're able to contact, trace, case investigate and able to control any kind of outbreaks that come up. This is our positivity rate. We've been consistently below 5% since about mid-December and have maintained that trajectory and kept it low. And again, this is just another statement that we have ample testing in Boulder County. Please take advantage of it. It's free, easily accessible. You can get all that information on our website. Our hospitalizations have been on a steady decline. We've had a little bit of an uptick here and we'll keep an eye on that. But our numbers are low comparative to where we've come from in the fall and where we were in the early spring. I'm not going to talk about this because Helene already covered it. Thank you. I'm going to pass that too. This is where I wanted to talk a little bit more about some of those projections. So these projections were run at the end of last week. And the Colorado School of Public Health will update these now on a weekly basis. So the next time that I come back, I'll present to you whatever the latest projections are. And they use the data on a week-to-week basis that they see reported in Colorado and across the nation to try to update these models. And I'm going to just focus on a couple of things here. I'm going to focus on this top graph. And this is long-term projections under the transmission control scenarios. And it relates to the number of infections we can expect to see as we're going forward. And I'm going to focus you on these dotted lines. And the dotted line, I got to stay away from the bottom of that because I know it pops up that box. But the dotted lines represent a scenario with B.1.1.7 variant. It's not even worth talking about without the B.1.1.7 variant because we already know it's here. So what that top dotted line shows when you're looking at this right here is that in the worst-case scenario where we're at 60% transmission control and our current transmission control is around 79%. And think of, again, transmission control is social distancing. So it's how much we wear masks, it's how much we reduce our mobility, it's how much we social distance. All those things contribute to transmission control. In a, in the worst-case scenario here, which is a 60% transmission control in the assumption that the B.1.1.7 variant increases 1% per day until it comprises half or 50% of the infections by early March. So that is what's being modeled here. In that scenario, we can expect to see a little over 4,000 infections. Just to compare that to where we were in the fall, in the fall, we were around 7,000 infections at a statewide level. So the scenarios that the school is running is not seeing scenarios where we're going to exceed significant increases like we saw in the fall. And it's not going to increase or exceed our hospital capacity either for total hospitalized patients or for active ICU patients. This is that same scenario at 60% transmission control with the variant. This is the line that represents the statewide ICU capacity. So the projections from the school are positive. It doesn't mean that this increase doesn't come with more associated impacts on people because it does. We know when we have more infections, we end up having more people who can have severe outcomes. But with the vaccine in place and the vaccine being distributed, assuming that it continues at the current rate, we can expect to see lower hospitalizations and less deaths because of the fact that the vaccine is getting to our highest-risk population. But it does mean in a worst-case scenario, we could still see more infections. And I'll talk about again what that means on the very last slide. Want to give a quick vaccination update here. We have 32 enrolled providers in Boulder County. We are, we can, we have the capacity to do about 22,000 vaccines per week. So with those 32 providers, we can do up to 22,000 vaccines per week. But the limitation is on the actual supply of the vaccine that's available to us. I know you all already know that. We are receiving, I think we received, and Derek would may have to correct me here, but I think we received as high as 8,000 doses and as low as 800 doses. And we are starting to get better predictions on what we might expect, but there was a long period of time where we didn't know if we were going to get 1,800, 600, 300 doses. We are getting a little better predictions now that we can count on more doses. But that is our only limitation on getting vaccines out. It is not that we don't have capacity, it's that we don't have enough of the vaccine available to distribute as much as our capacity is. I'm not going to go through this because Helene already covered it, but it's just the phasing. This is the, this shows where we are in the metro for the percent of the 70-plus vaccinated. Boulder County is the red line, so just below Broomfield here, we're at around 60%. We, all the metro areas are beginning to move up here, which is great. The more those, more vaccines we get, the faster that moves up. Again, the importance, especially of this population, is this is where 78% of our deaths come from. So we know once this population is vaccinated and they have immunity, it's going to lower our death rate, it's going to lower our hospitalization rate, and it's going to protect our most vulnerable. As you already heard from Stephanie, we have, we've worked with the school districts. BVSD worked directly with Boulder Community Health. Thank you again to Boulder Community Health. We can't do this without our providers in our community. And we can't do this without, without folks like BVSD taking the lead to make connections and make sure that these things are set up. So we do have providers that are providing vaccines directly to both of our public school districts as well as to all of our early childhood educators and our private schools in Boulder County. And thanks to our team, some of who are on the phone tonight, who have worked hard to help support and make sure that these things are in place. This is a quote from Simon Smith, who's the Director of Clinica. And it relates to exactly how we're looking at our equity values as we are thinking about vaccine. And it is with the lens of inclusion, that it's community-driven, that it takes collaboration together and shared ownership and leadership to make these differences. It's not about us going out and saying, this is how we're going to do this for our communities who are impacted the most. It's working with them to figure out how we do this together. We know if we can do that, then we're going to be more successful. We know that we have challenges with vaccine hesitancy and that if we work together with our cultural brokers, with our nonprofit organizations who are delivering services in our community, with the trusted folks in our community, that we can make a big difference in helping address those equity populations, which we know are having more severe outcomes and impacts associated with this disease. And this is just these couple, next couple of slides are just to talk about some of the approaches we're using. This is our community vaccination clinics. You've probably heard about pop-up clinics. That is one of the approaches that we're supporting as well. There was a very successful one between Salud and the University of Colorado Health System in Aurora. We're looking at that same approach in Boulder County. Again, working with our hospitals to help support that. There is a CD-PHE equity allotment. Part of the vaccine is dedicated to making sure that we can access and support, again, our most impacted communities. And these are the folks that we really are working with that I mentioned that can help us make sure that as we think about how, what's the best way to approach these communities, that we're doing it with folks who have the trusted relationships in the community. The mobile vaccination clinics are more focused on the homebound, independent living folks, but again, looking at our community ambassadors, working with our pharmacies and home health agencies. And Boulder County Public Health would also take a role as needed in this community as well. And this is the last slide. Again, I think what's important here is that we're continuing to see our deaths, hospitalizations and cases decline. And that's because in Colorado, we're doing really great work. One of the differences in Colorado that is making a difference is that our masking percentage across the state is around 75%. It's been a lot lower than that as an average across other states. And it is making a difference for us. It's helping us keep that transmission control up at a higher level. So we just need to continue to focus on that. We're getting through this. We're getting to the last part of this. We know that people are really, want to be at the end of this very badly, just as we, just as all of us on this phone do. And we just need to hang in there a little bit longer. We're going to get the vaccines out just as quickly as we get them. We've worked to make sure that we have a system in place that can do that. But it's going to take a little bit of time to get our entire populations vaccinated. And while we're doing that, please keep taking these, these strategies down here. Make sure you're masking, stay six feet apart. And then again, as I've mentioned before, go to addyourphone.com and you can add an app to your phone. It'll let you know if you've been in close proximity of someone who's a known positive and it will send you instructions on what to do from that point on. So there is hope. We're moving forward. We're going to pay attention closely with the Colorado School of Public Health. Look at what's happening with the variant, keep running those predictions and keep moving forward. We're getting there. So everybody, please keep up the good work. And that's all I have.
Okay, Rob, is that it?
Yes, that is it for the COVID update and superintendent's report. Happy to answer any questions for the board.
All right. Richard, shall we start with you?
Thanks, Jeff and Helene. Appreciate the information. I think the question that I have, and I think it's on everybody else's head, especially parents, is the middle school and high school students, when are we going to get them all back in?
Thank you, Richard. You know, as Jeff shared with you around when we'll know kind of when that, what that variant is doing and then when we'll have at least the first set of vaccines, we'll know that that first week of March. My intention would be to bring back a recommendation at that point. I think that, you know, this is challenging, right? Because certainly all signs are pointing to, to back to in-person, things are looking really good. You know, what we don't have control over is the vaccines. And we think that the vaccination of our teachers and of these high-risk populations is really what allows us to go in-person more and relax some of those social distancing requirements that we're maintaining right now. Because if you go back full, four days a week, five days a week, if you do that at middle school and high school, then you're not going to be able to keep that six-foot of social distancing in those areas. And I think that we feel like that by the first week of March, we'll have all the information that we need to make an educated and pragmatic decision around this. And so that would be the intent right now and happy to hear from Jeff or Chris on their thoughts.
Thanks, Rob. I'm happy to add to that as well. I fully agree with that and support that. And the one great thing that you all are doing that you obviously all know is you have really great controlled environments in all your schools. So you're already taking those great prevention strategies and you're putting them in place. So with the teachers being vaccinated, having the immunity, even though you're, you're going to have students come back that are going to be hard to social distance, you absolutely by requiring masks, are taking those prevention strategies, being in an area where you've got, your ventilation is maximized, you're doing all the right things in addition to getting those teachers vaccinated to set yourself up well. It doesn't mean that we won't see increased cases, right? We would anticipate to see increased cases. But when we know we've got our most severe folks who can be impacted, vaccinated, with those strategies in place, you're in as good a spot as you can be. So kudos to you. And I'll see if Chris has anything that he'd like to add to that at this point.
No, I think you're both spot on. I think the only thing I would add to that is that remember, we're not vaccinating children at this point. And so those prevention strategies, the mitigation strategies that we have in place are their protection. And so as we protect staff, teachers and the community by increasing the level of vaccination, we'll hopefully create that immunity that will protect all of us. So I would still encourage us, not only in the schools, and you've done an excellent job, but in our community to continue to pay attention to the mask, physical distancing, social gathering limitations, and particularly in extracurricular. and particularly in extracurricular activities. We're still seeing outbreaks in some of those extracurricular activities. And if we can reduce the spread of the illness, we can reduce the number of variants. And then therefore, you know, we're going to have a better decision come March by putting all of those things in place. And I hope that helps, Richard, because I do think we all care about this, but there's still a few more unknowns that we need to answer.
Just another quick question, uh, Dr. Urbina and Jeff and Rob. You mentioned uh, one of the factors would be how quickly we can get vaccinated, the uh uh, communities that uh have, that are really vulnerable, I'm talking about, in this case probably are are communities of color, primarily the Latino community. And I can, I can tell you that, uh, knowing some of the work that you all are doing as it relates to working with the trusted communities, the nonprofits out, out in the, in the world, because I know of a few of them already doing this work in Boulder County. And I know that you're doing a good job. I guess my question is, do we have, or, or could you let us know where we're at in terms of uh rates of vaccines and how many are we doing? Uh, what's the process and how quickly do you think we'll be able to get most of our communities of color vaccinated? And the other question too is, a lot of them are undocumented. How is that going to be supported?
And we have, um, we have Indira Gujral, who's on the phone with us. Uh, she is in charge of our Communical Disease and Emergency Management Division, and she's in charge of overseeing the vaccine plan, and I know that she has answers to this. And we do have slides. I can forward the slides to you as a follow-up as well, just to make sure all board members can actually see that, uh, because we do have it documented. Indira?
Finding mute. Thank you. Um, yes, this is a really important um question that you're raising, and we are working on developing an equity-based strategy. So I think Jeff shared both, two of the equity-based strategies. It's one of the, one is the community vaccination, um, which is actually driven by community members. So that means that the locations are identified by community places that they feel safe and feel um that should, should be where we should do vaccination clinics. And we're building that in partnership with our healthcare providers, and those healthcare providers are really important because they handle all the vaccine management side. Um, one of the things that we're really working on is addressing vaccine hesitancy. And so we have Dr. Sheila Davis. You may have seen her on TV. She is um in charge of our Health Equity Committee, and also um she is what we call a CD-PHE or a state uh vaccine champion. And so what Sheila's doing is offering town halls um where she answers questions. And Dr. Urbina recently did one, and he answers questions. And so the idea is to create as much transparency and to create an environment where people feel safe asking questions, because you're absolutely right. We know that the traditional vaccine strategies that we use, where we send everyone to DCH, um, those don't work for a lot of communities of color. And part of that is from historical injustice and harm between the medical community and people of color. And that goes back to the Tiski Dsyphilis Trials, the Henrietta Lacks. There's also been sterilization that was done in the seventies, and, you know, there's an intergenerational transfer of mistrust. And so we are very aware of that, so we are really focusing on having these town halls, both in English and Spanish, and offering people the opportunity to ask questions, because we know that it's so important for everyone to get the vaccine, but they also have to feel comfort with that. And then offering the ability to have access to those vaccines within the communities that they live and work and play. And then also, one of the issues that we're, we're facing right now, particularly with our older uh adults, is just transportation and mobility issues. And so we're working on mobile clinics as well, which will handle smaller doses of vaccine that go out to independent living sites and even small churches, um particularly uh African-American churches, um and Latinx communities as well. So we are working on those strategies. We hope to have the first community vaccine uh clinic started up in the next week or so. Um, but I, I just want to caution everyone, if, if we really want to do the equity work, it takes a little bit of time, because you have to really listen to the community and let them drive the decision-making, because if we drive the decision-making, that's not going to work, right? You can set up these pop-up clinics, but if you don't have the trust, the trust is so important, people aren't going to come. And so we have to work with the community to make sure that we instill the trust, creating opportunities for people to ask questions, and then create the locations and the sites that are community-driven to allow them to access the vaccine. Does that help?
It does help, but I guess, uh, I, I still need to know are, is the undocumented community going to have access to the vaccine?
Yes. In fact, I was working with Sheila this morning. Um, and, you know, we have to do it in a way that allows for the undocumented community to feel comfort and have a trusted partner to be able to help coordinate that vaccine um distribution to them.
Very good. Thank you so much. I know another issue that's coming up is the uh in the early childhood education world, you have, in this whole world, you have family, friend, and neighbor childcare. Most of them are unlicensed, and it seems like the vaccines are going towards your licensed childcare providers. Are we going to be doing anything to vaccinate our unlicensed childcare providers?
We are definitely advocating for this, because we do see this as an inequity. Um, the governor has said that we would be able to vaccinate those in licensed childcare centers. Um, but we know that the uh family and friendly care, and I use that even when I was, when I had my kids were little, um, it's so important to make sure that people have access across the board for all early childhood educators. Unfortunately, we're just in this position where we ask the state, can we do, can we do this? Can we move in this direction? And they're telling us no. So I do encourage you all to uh send letters and um write to the governor and say that this is an inequity that you don't agree with, because we need all the advocacy we can get to be able to uh push for this change. So we're in a hard position. Jeff, do you want to add anything else?
No, I think you, you've hit, you've, you've said it exactly. The other thing I would let you know, I've, I was in uh Early Childhood Council of Boulder County Board Member for several years. And we also know that this population um is a tough one to reach. We, we are working and the, the current ECC BC Director is trying to actually collect a list of unlicensed childcare workers um so that we know who they are, where they are, so that we can support them when it does come time that we can actually provide vaccines to them.
Well, yeah, I used to be the founder and executive director of the Colorado Statewide Parent Coalition, and we work with at least over two thousand of your informal childcare providers in Boulder County and, and uh that organization has a lot of names that they can provide to you. The other question is, most of these unlicensed childcare providers, your FFN childcare providers, your immigrant childcare providers, they're also undocumented. So if you're going to have vaccines available for the undocumented community, these particular childcare providers should be able to access that.
That is true. I think one of the things that we always have to keep, um we always have to think about is we're in this phased distribution approach. So right now, it's sixty-five and older, right? So, um, but at, but you're right, as we open up, we'll be able to get more people access to the vaccine.
Thank you.
Is that it, Richard? Okay. I may be sensing another resolution on the horizon. Kathy, do you have any uh questions?
Um, just a few. Thank you so much. Um, the focus on the equity work is impressive, and the fact that we're getting an equity allotment from CD-PHE gives me some comfort that at least we're starting to have the right discussion, and I totally agree with you that it needs to be community-driven and not driven by those of us sitting on the phone right now. So thank you for paying attention to that. I just have a couple of questions. Assuming that this trajectory continues on this positive path, do you foresee us still needing to do social distancing and masking and all that through the end of the school year, through June? That's my understanding, but I'm not sure that people have a clear understanding of how long we need to continue to do that.
Yeah, definitely. I would love Dr. Urbina to answer this. She's done such a great job with this question each time. Chris, could you take that?
Very happy to. Yeah, Kathy, it's a great question, and I think this is a question on everybody's mind. How soon can I stop wearing my mask and how soon can I stop physical distancing and go back to hugging and social gathering? I think we have to remember that the vaccines are not a hundred percent. So that, that we know that the studies have shown that, that they prevent moderate to severe disease and will prevent hospitalizations and death, and that's, that's very important. That's why we're struggling to get people protected very early on, particularly the most vulnerable populations. There is some good evidence that the, the vaccines, the current Pfizer and Moderna, do protect against uh infection as well, but it's not perfect. Um, so that there's some people will still might be carrying the virus in their nays, nose, and then some, and because it's only ninety-five percent effective, some people may actually still develop the infection. So until, for the time being, when, while we're, and, and then the, the other piece is, not everyone will, will get the vaccine. So we may not have significant numbers enough to try to get that number up as high as we can to protect everybody. So it's going to be a while before we can actually safely say that that masks and physical distancing and social gathering i- is not going to be part of that so, solution. And the final thing is what I mentioned earlier, is that children are currently not going to be vaccinated. So they're going to, they could potentially still get infected, and as Jeff said earlier, we're going to see some infections in the schools. So protecting people who are not vaccinated, protecting other children uh who may get the infection by wearing masks, physical distancing, and all the great things that all of you are doing is still going to be with us for a while. And we don't know how long that's going to last. Um, but as we, as we ratchet up the vaccine, as we combine that with natural immunity, and we can dine it with all these prevention strategies, hopefully we can eliminate the susceptible hosts, and the virus won't have a place to go, uh, because there'll be, everybody will be protected. But that's going to take a while.
Yeah, so that's why I was a little confused, because um we were talking about how the beginning of March will know what we can do for bringing students back, but we're still going to be subject to a lot of the same constraints we have now. And that's going to be true through the end of the school year, at least. Is that a fair statement? I just don't want to have misperceptions about what we can do come middle of March, which is not business as usual. Um, I'm just, this is just a personal question, if you'll indulge me. Is the treatment of the B-117 the same as the treatment for the COVID that we've been, the COVID-19 that we've been seeing? I mean, if, I, I saw the hospital curve, and if I understand it correctly, even if that becomes as prevalent as we're afraid, we're not going to hit the dangerous levels of ICU and all of that. And so I'm just wondering what the treatments do. Are we treating it the same with remdesivir and all of the other things? Is it still, do we treat it with that and steroids? I'm just curious.
Great question. The same, the answer is yes. Uh, the same mechanisms of treatment are still the same except for one. And that's, that's the convalescent antibody uh treatment that you recommended. That was, or antibodies collected against people who were to the previous uh virus variant. So that's not going to be as effective i- in, in the B-117 or the South African variants. But currently, remdesivir, uh, remdesivir, um, and um steroids, oxygen are all helpful in, in treating the virus regardless of the, of the virus itself, of the variant. And we can anticipate that we're going to have more variants. I mean, there are hundreds of variants out there. Most are harmless, but these three that we were talking about mostly in the national literature, uh, national news are the ones that we're most concerned about.
So on the slide that Jeff showed, it said if this B-117 continues on its trajectory, it would be more severe in Colorado. That was just one of the headlines. Is that something we need to worry about? Then you kind of explained that we're not going to hit any dangerous levels, even if it gets to that. So I was just curious. Of course, those words caught my mind, caught my eye. Is that?
Is there, so what was the, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood the question.
Why more severe in Colorado? Is that something we need to be worried about, or did you explain it away when you, when you talked through the curves?
So the, the severity in terms of the ability for it to transmit, but not in terms of the impacts that it has on populations that exist now. So it can transmit more easily, uh, and those projections that they were using was one percent per day up until a fifty percent mid-March of the variant being here. So they were projecting what they believe is a worst-case scenario. They're, they don't believe that it's going to be that bad, but they're putting it in there as a worst-case scenario to look at how that impacts the increased growth both in cases, as well as in hospitalizations and ICU um uh exceedances. And in a sixty percent transmission control, again, remembering we're at seventy-nine now, that won't exceed those things.
So I heard it. It does. I, I heard a kind of an analogy. Are we doing more testing for these variants? Because what I've heard is it's kind of like walking out on a football field with two flashlights right now and trying to find things, and we need like a hundred flashlights. Are we doing more testing for these variants, or are we still just hoping that we'll get in front of it and we won't need to?
Indira, do you want to take that?
Okay.
Yeah, um, the last I heard, they were not testing as many samples. Um, and Helene might know more of the latest and greatest on what's happening with testing, but I was hearing they were only testing about two hundred samples per week. Um, but my understanding is that that hopefully should expand over time, and they're, they are saying that it's going to become the dominant uh strain, just because of the transmissibility of it. Um, but I, I think I really want to emphasize what Jeff said in the very beginning of his presentation, which is just that we have to keep these mitigation efforts in place, because if we can uh keep it up, we're going to, and we, and we're vaccinating a whole bunch of people at the same time, we are really going to be able to suppress the virus. So it's, it's going to be a combination. We're in this transition period, and it's going to be a combination of getting that vaccine as soon, out as soon as we can, and making sure that we follow these uh really close mitigation efforts. And I will say that having children in the Boulder Valley School District, you guys are doing a great job. Um, I feel like it's really working, and we just have to, we just have to keep it up through the school year.
One last quick question. There was a slide that talked about vaccinations for the unhoused. Is, is there a plan for that?
Um, so we do have a, uh, we, we, the shelter staff, um, and the unhoused do fall into later categories of the phased distribution. Um, and we do, we are working very closely to make sure that we are ready to go as soon as we get permission to start vaccinating. Um, and that would fall under that mobile clinic strategy, which is the strategy for providing doses to smaller numbers of people. And we, in public health, do this all the time. Um, we had a hepatitis A outbreak over the past few years. Many of you probably don't even know about it. Um, and where a lot of people who are unhoused were definitely directly impacted, and so we had, we've been doing this for years. Um, and it's been very successful to do these mobile clinics and, and go out to where people are at. I think the challenge, the, the challenge with the shelters is the two doses, right? So, um, when you have a lot of people who are more of a transient nature, not in the same place, it becomes a little bit harder, which is why the Johnson &amp; Johnson, we're really excited to see what happens with Johnson &amp; Johnson, because that could be a real game changer for us to be able to handle and get people vaccinated more quickly.
I was just really encouraged to see that there's a focus on, on that population as well, so. Um, so thank you very much. I don't have any more questions, Tina.
Uh, I can answer your question if you'd like. I found the, the answer to the variant and how much testing we're doing. It's on CD-PHE's website, and I'm just going to read it really quick. It's just a, a statement. CD-PHE screens all positive COVID-19 samples to the state lab for the B-117 variant, representing approximately ten percent, ten to fifteen percent of the total positive tests statewide. With other laboratories now able to identify certain characteristics associated with the variant viruses, approximately thirty percent of the state's positive cases are being screened for the B-117 variant. That's a release on their website.
So we're up to three or four flashlights.
Yep. That was as of February fifth.
All right, thanks. Thanks for looking that up, Jeff.
Absolutely.
Okay, Donna?
Yeah, just a couple of questions that have come from the community. And, um, you know, parents, students sitting on this precipice of what's going to happen, and I know that a lot of the answers are wait and see, and knowing that this vaccine has gone through at warp speed, and um you may not have the answer to this, but how long can those receiving the vaccine expect that protection factor to last?
Um, that's still unknown. We, let me talk a little bit about natural immunity. We think um for, early on in the, in the course of the disease process, we thought that if you have a very severe infection, that immunity lasts a little bit longer. Um, uh, longer than three months, but if you have a mild infection, it's about three months. Those neutralizing antibodies stay around for a while. We think the vaccine- We think the vaccine is immunity is a little bit longer. We don't know exactly because those clinical trials are still being, those people that were in the clinical trials are still being followed. So what that's, I'm not being evasive, I'm just saying that as we follow these people that have been vaccinated for a longer period of time, we will know the answer to that question. But it's certainly longer than three months. It could be as long as a year, and also is dependent on on the variants. So there is possible that you were vaccinated and then the virus changes in the future so that it may not be as effective for the new variant. So I know, I don't want to scare people, but I think that's why we have to closely watch these and still have all our prevention strategies that Endira and Jeff talked about in place. So that answer will come as we learn more, as we learn more and follow these people that have been vaccinated to see if it continues to protect them against the virus as it continues to mutate. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. That's helpful. I think, I guess we're all kind of in that that trial or, you know, that let's wait and see phase. As we get vaccinated ourselves, we'll wait and see what happens, and we're part of the, I guess, experiment, so to speak. The other question that I have has to do with, I think parents are are more concerned about the if X, then Y. And Dr. Abina and Jeff, this isn't necessarily for you, but you might add into what Dr. Anderson might say, but but the parents hearing that, well, on March 6th will tell you, they've kind of been sitting, waiting, 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 as students have been as well. And if we know that all teachers are pretty much in that that phase after they've received the vaccine, and April 10th is kind of, or 10th or 11th is, is the, okay, everybody's been vaccinated, everybody's had this two-week period, on April 12th, can we expect everyone back to full-time learning? According to Kathy's question, it's like, no, we're not because we're going to still be under these restrictions. That's the distancing which the high school will make it impertinent that because of the the size, they're like little cities, mini cities, not the same size as elementary schools, that they make it harder for kids to all come back together. So so my question is, maybe the district could put out an if X, then Y, you know, if A happens, then 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 we'll move to B. I think just wait and see is is more difficult for parents to deal with. That's just my comment on that, and I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I'm happy to respond to that, Donna, and I appreciate that. And I think that, you know, there are opinions in this community. I think that there are folks that thought we should have been in five days a week the entire year, right? And I think that there are folks that, if you if you listen to the numbers, one in three high school students are still not coming in at all in person, right? And I think that there are different, differing opinions throughout the community. Again, we've been committed to working with Boulder County Public Health to try to make sure that we're really focusing on the best information that we have and making decisions in a timely manner so that when we make a decision, we can move forward. You know, I think back to August, right, where we thought we had a decision and we had to reverse that decision and how the negative impact on our community, and I do not want to do that, and I think that that's critically important. I think that as we think about the first week in March, we'll know, we'll have a month more between now and then to know a couple of things. One, to what extent is this variant the percentage of the virus that is spreading throughout our community, right? And I think what Jeff shared is that we would, we should be able to see that trend, and we should also see to make sure that the vaccines that are projected to be available for us are available, right? I mean, I think that our competence is growing, but as Jeff shared with you, that there are, that there were expectations around vaccine and the the levels of vaccine that were coming into the community, which is not within our control nor the governor's control. I mean, these are things that we need to want to make sure. So I understand that that there is an angst amongst a group within our community to know exactly right now what it is that we're going to do. I think that the the practical approach is to wait till the first week of March, right? I mean, at this point, no one's saying that you do that, you would do anything anyways before all teachers or the majority of educators have been vaccinated, right? We'll continue to watch the cases. I'll continue to to work and learn with the latest science and things that are happening and look at those trends and then make that decision on the first week of March. I just think, you know, given the opportunity to get all that information before making a final decision, follows just along the path that we've been following in regards to making the decisions aligned to the health and science. And I'd welcome Chris or Jeff to to kind of comment on that.
I don't have anything to add. I think it was well stated.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I wanted to to just say that I do think, I think parents in most cases do understand that that there's a lot that goes into this decision, and and I think they just want to see, here's what we need to see, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whatever. So but but thank you for the comment, and I think it gives parents a little more direction. Thank you.
Okay, Kitty.
Okay, first of all, thanks, Donna, for always bringing up concerns that you're hearing from the community. One of the things that we're hearing, and I think it contributes to parents, you know, confusion or being upset, is when things like the CDC says, okay, everybody can go back to school, or that's what we hear them saying, they may in the fine print say something else, and then parents naturally are saying, okay, the CDC said it, why are we not back in school? Or the governor will say something, and that's, you know, kind of almost more aspirational. And we hear from parents, okay, the governor said this, why are we not back in school? And so I think it's helpful to understand, you know, what more goes into it, like you were talking about, than just the CDC saying something or the governor saying something. And also with the vaccines, because we, you know, as soon as we heard vaccines were available, we started hearing from the community, why, you know, what are you telling the teachers? When are they getting vaccinated? So, you know, this is not a criticism of, you know, how anyone here is handling it, it's just the messaging that the public hears and what it actually takes to do what the messaging says, there's a pretty big gap in there. And I'm just curious, like, the best way to address that with the public so that they don't get anxious about it? And I have a couple other questions too, because that wasn't really a question so much as an observation. So are the teachers or is anybody being required to be vaccinated, or is it just voluntary?
I'll let Stephanie speak for what's happening at BVSD or Rob, but we are not requiring people to, it's not mandated.
Okay.
And part of that is because it's under an emergency use authorization.
So Rob, so we're not requiring any staff to get it, it's just if they want to?
Yeah, no, and Stephanie can provide some more details on that, yeah, but no, at this point, we're not requiring.
No, they are not required.
Okay, and another question I have is, so you're talking about this Saturday, 1,000 teachers are going to be able to be vaccinated. So are they just able to call up and say, I want to make an appointment? Are they on a list? Because I'm in the same group, though, as the teachers are in terms of getting vaccinated, but I know I'm on a list that's like tens of thousands long and and won't be able to get mine until my number comes up. So I'm hoping that's a whole lot better for teachers.
So yes, we developed lists, about 3,400 staff that we identified, so not just teachers, but student-facing staff in the schools. And then we organized the, that 3,400 into basically three main groups. BCH was, again, just amazing to work with, and so we provided information to all of our staff that they could go to my BCH and create an account. If they had a personal account, they could use that account. And then on Monday, yesterday afternoon, we sent the first notification that it was available, that staff for BVSD could go and sign up for appointments. So about 1,000 of those notices went out to our staff, and they went on and started making appointments. And and every day, BCH gives us an update in the morning of how many folks have actually gone in and made appointments. And so as the week goes on, you know, we know some people have already been able to get vaccines other places, but as the week goes on, then we'll see how many slots we have left, and we'll continue to send additional invites out to folks. So when we get to Saturday, we want to make sure that we have every slot filled. Yeah, so if I could add something, Stephanie, too, and that is that in terms of the allotment, so once we partnered, once BCH partnered with Boulder Valley School District, a third of their allotment is going towards Boulder Valley School District staff. And so that allotment was predetermined by the State Health Department so that Boulder Community Hospital knew of the 3,000 doses they were getting for that week, 1,000 would be able to go for Boulder Valley School District. And that's how it's being handled with all school districts and private schools and ECE providers as well. And that's just to ensure. I think the key message here is that those allotments will hold for a few weeks, but after those allotments are taken care of, you know, we're going to move on to the next phase of the distribution. So it's really important to encourage staff to take advantage now of getting the vaccine because once we move on to the next phase, which is the 1B3, which is a lot larger with frontline workers and others, it's going to be harder to connect people to the vaccine.
So I just happened to meet two of our student teachers this week. They came into the store where I worked up until yesterday when the store went out of business, but anyway, they're at, one's at the K, Monarch K8, one's at Monarch High, and I asked them if they'd been getting notifications about vaccines. Are we include, and they said, no, they're just hearing it through their cooperating teacher. So are we making an effort to include people who are student teaching and doing practicums? Because there's just as much student-facing as the teachers are.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Mike answer that question for us directly because I don't want to give the wrong information. I believe so, but I'll let Mike answer that for sure.
Hi, so Kitty, yes, they are being included. They are student-based, and we are including them and practicing students as well. We have about, I believe we have almost 100 student teachers, so we have included them. They will be receiving notifications. They are the youngest group, of course, but still they'll be receiving it late, but they'll be included.
Okay. Yeah, and one of the, this topic, but one of the teacher, student teachers I met was a 2017 graduate from Monarch High, and now he's student teaching there. So I think that's kind of cool. Okay, I'm going to make sure I have all my questions. Oh, about the B117 variant, is that the UK variant? And I keep hearing things about the South African one and not responding to vaccines. Is that something that's gotten here yet?
And Deera, Chris, do you want to take that? Sure, it's now in two different states, Texas and South Carolina, and that means if it's been detected there, it's probably in other states as well. So I, you know, it's a global world, and people, lots of people travel and visit their families. And so I think the press release that you saw was that the AstraZeneca vaccine found to be not as effective with the South African variant because that's one of the vaccines that's tested in multiple places around the world. So I think that's part of the challenge, is as these viruses mutate, they, the vaccines become less effective. That is true both for Moderna and Pfizer. However, the effectiveness of those two vaccines against the UK variant and the other variants seems to be pretty high still, maybe not 94, 95% effective, but still pretty high. We're still encouraging people to get the vaccine. If you have access to it, get vaccinated because it's still going to be able to help you regardless if it's effective. Remember, on the average year, some some years, the influenza vaccine is in the 20% effective. So so I would think no vaccine is perfect, and those, and I know Donna's going to hate me when I say this, is that we're still learning about the vaccines and the variants, so we just have to be patient, and we'll be sharing all the science as we know it and as those studies are continuing to be done. I don't know, Endira, if you want to add anything to that.
Kitty, do you have more questions?
No, I just was looking to see, because I had written them down. No, I don't have any more questions. Thank you so much. Thanks for all the hard work you're doing, and I know you're probably every day in meetings like this updating some group or other. So just thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, Lisa, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have two questions for Rob. So first, I just wanted to clarify the timeline. You're saying that you would be able to bring us a proposal to consider it our first meeting in March, which I think is March 9th, and then we have, no, sorry, go ahead.
I think that the idea was within the first week of March, we would know. So to the extent that we would call a special board meeting or we would just inform the public on where we are, I think would be, would be what we're, you know, that would, that would make the most sense. With the idea that, you know, when you look at that timeline, if you do that, that first week of March, you give families several weeks to kind of figure out what it is that we're going to do, in the event we're going back and changing and increasing the number of days in person. And so that's, that's why we pick that week.
Okay, and I guess that's what I was going to ask next. Since that's a spring break month there in the third week, are we imagining that the soonest possible day we would see a significant change would be around March 30th?
I think the idea would be that by picking that first week in March, we, if we wanted to do something during that week, we would be able to do that, right? Again, I think that, you know, you know, as Donna shared, the if then scenarios and folks really are trying, you know, what is it that you're going to do? Again, I just think that as Dr. Abina shared, as Jeff has shared, we're going to learn a lot over the next month. I feel like that first week of March, we'd be, would be in a great position to be able to decide and determine where we need to go with next steps. And so, you know, with the idea that you could do something after after spring break.
Okay, thank you. And then, so for the rest of the year, we don't know whether it'll be two days or four days or what will happen, and we anticipate because of that and because of the different kinds of hybrid learning, that we won't ever have Mondays in person. But is the idea that BU Link next year will get rid of that need and that next year we hope that we'll be able to do five days a week in person?
Yes, I need to be incredibly clear. Our hope is that we would have five days in-person learning starting next August. If I've learned anything, you know, during this pandemic, is that you have to prepare for multiple scenarios, right? That's why when we set out with with this, we had a five-phase plan. My hope that would be we would be in phase five come August. Now, you know, that's what, six months away? Did I get that right? Six months away. So if I look at six months, you know, backwards, you know, so to be clear, right, I don't want, you know, folks to come away from the information we shared tonight to think of anything, think anything differently, right? Our hope is to be in phase five, five days a week in person, and then BU Link would be the option and opportunity for folks who at that point in time still weren't comfortable with in-person learning.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, I'm not asking you to predict the future. I just hear a lot of folks feeling confused about that four-day versus five days. I want to make sure that my understanding is right, that we'll be in four days for the rest of the year, but that the hope is next August that five days would be achievable again, obviously with all the different factors being what they are, but that Mondays would be back on the table for in-person learning.
Well, in regards to the Monday launch days, I just want to reiterate to our community and to the board the incredible importance that those are for our educators, right? They're using that opportunity to plan for high flex learning, which we know has been an incredible challenge. And we also know that even if all of the data is looking the ways that it's trending and we're hoping, and that even if we're able to come back, you know, more days, four days, the the challenge will be we are still going to have schools, we're still going to have kids that are going to be learning remotely, and we're still going to have educators that we're going to be asking to balance both of those. We'd be hard pressed to eliminate that launch day because the only way that you'd want to eliminate the launch day is if you didn't have folks learning online, and I don't see based on the trends, based on the data where we are, we're still going to have a significant portion of our students that will have to be learning through that synchronous, that synchronous model.
Sorry, I'm somehow getting more confused instead of less confused. So are you, are you talking about for the rest of this year, or are you talking about into next year? Because my understanding was that BU Link was meant to take care of that in the next year.
Talking about the rest of this year, what you had asked me, Lisa, was what are we doing about the four versus five days? And I was just talking about that, that, that Monday launch day, why we built it into the schedule, and the critical importance it is for our educators to make sure whether you're learning online or whether you're learning in person, you're getting a great experience.
Okay, yes, thank you. I agree. That does it for me.
Okay, and Stacy?
All of my questions have been answered.
All of my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple.
I have one question when you're done, please.
Okay. My questions are, are we getting interest from teachers who took exemptions to getting the vaccine? Is this been a high-interest or medium-interest proposition?
Mike Rados, I see your microphone, there you go.
Yeah. Great question, yes, we are getting interest of teachers who, after the second vaccine, they would be interested in coming back.
Okay. Then my other question is, when we, when you looked at the modeling for the UK variant, I don't remember the other name, it assumed a, we're at a 79% transmission TC rate right now. Does the, does the projection that you displayed include the opening of businesses and indoor dining and gyms to 50%, which is the reality today? Or was it the reality three days ago before we moved to the altered dial?
It did not include a specific dotted line for that. We did meet with the Colorado School of Public Health. I asked them to actually put this in writing because when we asked them that question from the Metro Directors Group, they said that the scenarios of where we've moved on the dial, so if you look at most places that were in orange or red moving down a level, that it was not going to reach the 60% scenario. So it's less than that is the prediction. The School of Public Health has said that they will try to predict that specifically for us, but that they don't see that changing the outcome of being worse than the 60% scenario. So that, that's what was shared with us. So I did not hear that was a concern.
Okay, so we can, we shouldn't be concerned about 50% occupancy in restaurants, gyms, auditoriums, all that shouldn't have any negative effect?
It won't exceed the 60% scenario. So that's what I would say. I won't say it won't have any effect. Anytime we open things up, we're gonna have more people getting together, but it's not going to exceed the 60% scenario.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that is all I have. Kathy, you have another question?
Good question. So there's been some questions about our testing. We are currently doing under our scenarios of the mobile testing and all of that. We're doing sufficient testing. Is that a fair statement? We don't need to be doing the binax testing or anything else because we're covering it with what we're currently doing. Is that correct?
Rob, do you want me to answer that from a community perspective first, and then you all can talk about what you're doing?
If that works.
So from a community perspective, we have, like I said, ample, ample testing. We have a commitment from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to continue that testing while vaccines are being distributed. I think everybody is likely knows on the phone here that there is a site in Boulder and there is a site at Stasio Ballfields and at the Longmont Fairgrounds that is free testing. There's information on our website. You don't have to have symptoms, you can go get tested when, whenever you'd like, and that is supported both by Boulder as well as Longmont and the State Health Department.
And I didn't know if Rob Price, if you wanted to talk a little bit about our testing efforts?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Right now, Kathy, to answer your question, we have the Centara site that is currently a community site that is open to all of our staff, students, and the entire community, which is ran by COVID check. We also have two mobile testing sites that are out at individual schools. And then we also set up the mobile testing site that goes up to Nevermind. So right now, we feel like we're meeting our needs. And then we also have another site that can be set up immediately if we're seeing high numbers of absenteeism, et cetera, at a particular school, if we need to get that set up to the school. So to answer your question, yes, we feel like we're meeting our needs right now. We have not pursued the binax now testing for a number of reasons. We feel like the PCR testing is still the way to go. But if we think we need to ramp up, we will. But right now, we feel like we've met that need.
I mean, for what it's worth, I'm hearing that the testing is going really well. So I just wanted to make sure that what I was hearing anecdotally was sufficient because it's such a key part of trying to get in front of this. So thanks.
Okay, yeah, and I'll attest to that. I was at the Crestview mobile site today, and I was at the Whittier mobile site two weeks ago, and my child drooled into a little vial, and everything went great, and we've got our results in 18 hours or something, fantastic like that. And we've been all over, we've been to Stasio, we were in the, you know, fifth level of the parking lot at the hospital, and they've all been terrific. And really nice people also, made it very comfortable and welcoming. All right, so with that, I just want to thank all of you again for joining us, Celine and Jeff and both your teams, Dr. Abina and Deera. This is just so helpful as we continue to navigate this. Obviously, there's a lot of excitement around what might happen on March 6th, understanding that we can continue to learn and evolve as our world changes around us. So I think we'll move on to the next item unless any board member needs a break now. Or is everyone ready to move on? Okay, I'm seeing some nobs. Terrific. So our next item is public participation. And just a reminder that we are still participating virtually, but of course, we will like to be in-person as soon as possible. Bye, Dr. Abina. And the way to participate is to connect with Laura Schaefer, our Board Secretary, before noon today, and she'll put you on the list. Then when you're on, when you're signed up, you'll be given the link and you'll be waiting in a waiting room, in our Zoom waiting room. And then we call the names and you join us. So just a quick reminder that just please keep your comments remain to the business of the board. Please do not exceed two minutes. You will have, at 30 seconds, Laura will hold up her first sign, which is yellow, and then at 20, 10 seconds, you'll have orange. Is that right? Yeah. And then when your time is done, show up a red sign and you'll be muted then by our moderator. And that's about it. We do ask that your comments be suitable for an audience that ranges from pre-K through 12. So our first speaker is a student speaker, and we'll start with agenda items and then move to non-agenda items, Connor Scott.
My name is Connor Scott, and I'm a student at Fairview High School. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of teenagers that have all but given up. They didn't want to speak tonight because they think it won't make a difference, that you don't really listen to us. I challenge you to prove them wrong. To the families of the two Boulder High or Boulder County teens who took their lives last week, and the six or more families who faced their own unimaginable grief this year, sorry doesn't come close to the pain that you are experiencing and the deep sadness that we as a generation feel. The effect of these deaths ripple, permanently crippling our community from the ground up. This is changing our whole generation for the rest of our lives. I've watched slowly as many of my peers get hooked on horrible drugs and pills. I've seen all these horrific drugs and pills make waves around our small town, ruining the lives of all these kids, my peers. Since our schools closed nearly a year ago, I've lost eight of my friends and peers to the monster of drug addiction, and two just in this past week, and one during the span of this very meeting. I can say for a fact that most, if not all, these people would not have passed away if they're able to regularly socialize and learn with other people in school, have other caring adults looking over them and engaging with them. It's beyond tone death, beyond unconscionable that we are not in school full-time. Sadly, though, the only thing that it is, is unsurprising. With the number of teen deaths by suicide now greater than deaths from COVID and growing, the answer, the only answer is to do what so many schools and so many districts, both in Colorado and around the country, have done. Reopen middle and high schools now. What are you waiting for? All these deaths are the result from your inaction. If you're a parent, family member, or friend of a teenager, you should be worried. You should be worried about the long-term effects on our mental health of being isolated from our peers during a crucial time in our development as adults. Are you really worried about how little we're learning and how much time we sat staring at the same screen day after day, week after week, month after month?
Okay, our next speaker is Christine Hansen.
Christine, you're muted. I got it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, sorry. Hi, can I start?
Yes.
Okay, yes, my name's Christine Hansen, and thank you to the school board for taking time to listen to our position and taking a stand against high potency THC. I wanted to give you my perspective as a parent of a Boulder High junior and also as a physician in the community. I wanted to preface this that my son's father died last year of complications of marijuana and alcohol use, and we have seen firsthand its harm from this. When my son started as a freshman, he came home saying that he had never seen so many drugs in his life at Boulder High. He quickly began vaping, then doing dabs and many other marijuana products that had high potency THC of 90 to 95%. He is now a junior, and I'm sure he's addicted as he smokes daily, and he really thinks there's nothing wrong with this, even though his father has died from this. His life has changed in that he's lost interest in his activities, and he gets regularly failing grades in school. As a physician, I'm a gynecologist in the community, and I've had many young girls come into their appointments to see me, and they are extremely high and very difficult to work with. When questioned about drugs and alcohol, daily marijuana use does not seem to be a concern to them, and they actually consider it a normal activity. The tolerance to high potency THC and its regular use being okay and normal just astounds me in this town. It is not okay, and I've seen its detrimental effect with my son and my patients. It seems that no one really thinks it a problem until they have a child or a family member who is affected by how addictive THC can be. And hopefully by decreasing the potency and your stand with the decrease in the high potency of THC will decrease addictive potential to our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just a note, we're going to ask Connor Scott to forward the end of his statement because it seems like it might have been cut off. Our next speaker is Avani Dilger.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Avani Dilger, and I have worked as a licensed professional counselor and substance abuse counselor in Boulder now for over 20 years. And I run the nonprofit program Natural High, Healthy Alternatives to Drugs and Alcohol, which is a substance abuse prevention intervention program, and we are approved as speakers in health classes in Boulder Valley schools. I'm here today because we see a severe fallout from high THC concentrates in teens. We see a development of very severe mental health issues, severe anxiety and depression, a sharp rise of suicidality in kids, in psychotic episodes, and teens ending up in the emergency room because they cannot stop vomiting from cannabis hyperemesis syndrome. Most people in our community are not aware of the level of THC concentration that now more of, more than half of all teens who are using cannabis are currently using in Boulder schools. Where the original cannabis contained under 1% THC, the currently available products contain up to 99% THC. I currently work with teens who use about 1,000 milligrams of THC daily, which would be the equivalent of 500 to 1,000 joints of marijuana that was used, for example, in the 60s. The fallout of these THC concentrates is new and is something that I've never seen before in this community. Very severe mental health issues, very severe addiction, and a rapid development of tolerance that makes teens very susceptible to move on to other drugs like opioids or benzodiazepines. I ask you to please support any effort to reduce the potency of THC products in this community, and I want to be a resource for you all with this issue. Thank you so much.
Okay, Joelle Rossback.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a BDSM parent of three. I also represent a parent action group called Advocates for Clean Teens. First, I want to say thanks for taking a stand on the high potency THC and supported the health and well-being of our kids. Some of you may or may not know that Colorado ranks number one in the nation for first-time marijuana use for all age groups of kids. The cannabis industry, as we know, has cleverly marketed their products as healthy and medicinal. So a majority of our youth and even parents think THC is safe. Many of them don't understand, though, that pot has changed dramatically since legalization. In 2019, marijuana concentrates in Colorado had an average THC potency of 69%. And some products, many of which are marketed to our youth with names like Girl Scout Cookies or Scooby Snacks, have up to over 90% THC content, much like Avani mentioned. The science is clear that high potency THC and developing brains do not mix. Research shows serious problems with high potency THC, including dependence, psychosis, depression, severe anxiety, and suicide. There have been parents that have come to our group and described the devastation their kids and families have experienced as a result of high potency THC. Some of their children's lives have been changed dramatically forever. So thank you again for understanding the seriousness of this issue and for taking a stand for our Colorado youth.
Okay, Dawn Rhinefeld.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your willingness to lead on the issue of high potency THC and the impacts it's having on our youth and young adults. As a parent of teens, I see firsthand the damage being done to our teens that are dabbing Shatter. Many teens are getting med cards at 18, often while they are still in high school and without their parents' knowledge. Recently, someone I know was able to get a med card within a 60-second appointment online with a med doctor. High potency THC is linked to cannabis-induced psychosis, and this is well documented in many peer-reviewed studies. Marijuana is the top substance found in teens that die by suicide. In 2018, the last reported year from the state, shows that number to be 36%. 36% of teens 15 to 19 years old that die by suicide have marijuana in their system. Alcohol is not even close. THC potency has risen over 800% since 2010. Some high THC concentrates like Shatter are over 90% THC, and they come in flavors like Scooby Snacks and Girl Scout Cookies. I'm grateful that BDSM is willing to take a stand for the health and well-being of our youth and our young adults by calling for a cap in THC potency. It is truly so important that we take a stand and reveal the truth about what's really happening with these products and the devastating effect it's having on our, on our youth and young adults. So I'm really grateful. Thank you so much.
Okay, Sean Rota. Is Sean here?
Sean is online. It looks like he is now not muted. His microphone is going in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. I also wanted to speak about the high potency regulation. And I guess I wanted to really talk about it tonight because if you guys don't have teenagers, you may not have even known that this is going on. Like Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier, you know, this is not the stuff that we thought we were legalizing when we, when we voted in favor of Amendment 64 Howrmany years ago. The Shatter that people are talking about, this stuff is, you smoke it through a crack pipe with a butane torch, and like they've mentioned, it's, you know, 90% and up THC. It's not smoking a joint. And these kids-- And these kids, the reason why I think it's so important for you guys to address it is they really are finding it in school. My son was first exposed to this stuff at Fairview also. I had another friend whose son was at Fairview and her son said, "Mom, I can't even go. I have to do online school because there's so much high potency pot at Fairview. I can't be there and not be around it." And so, I think it's really important that you guys as educators and as a school board take a stand on this and really be at the forefront. I also wanted to just address some of Connor's statements. I don't know Connor, but it, you know, as a mom, I have two teenagers. I don't know if I said that. I have one at Casey, one at Boulder High now. It's heartbreaking and our kids are losing their friends left and right. I mean, my son's friend died last week. My son is 15 years old and he's seen his friend die by suicide and now by overdose. So, I'm sorry. As someone, one of the other callers mentioned, these, the suicides and the drug abusers are tied to this high potency marijuana. And so, thank you so much for taking this issue on. I would be happy to talk to any of you with the science, the data, all of the research. If you haven't seen it, I don't know how educated all of you are, but thank you for taking a stand. We really appreciate it.
Okay, Stacy Harrison.
There we go. Okay, so, yeah, I'm also a parent of two that have been through the Boulder Valley system from start to finish. I'm not entirely finished. And I just, I don't have anything prepared, but I do want to speak on the same topic because I can speak firsthand that it is a enormous sort of devastating impact that high potency THC has on a teenage, a teenager's mental health, a teenager's long-term kind of success, and also just financially, it's a huge hit on families. And I can speak to that firsthand. It's, you know, I was naive in thinking that when marijuana would be legalized, that these, I didn't even realize that there was such a thing as high potency THC that's manufactured. And lo and behold, my son had easy access. And I don't know how anyone could expect a child to individually battle an industry that is directly marketing to them, a, an addictive drug, a hard drug. And I'm really frankly devastated that, that we have become the guinea pigs because we're the first of the states to do such a thing. So, I am just, all I can say is I'm internally grateful that you are willing to take this on because I know this is a very powerful industry. But the future of our children really are at stake. So, I thank you.
Okay, Lisa Hall.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I need to start my stopwatch. Dr. Anderson, your two major concerns to reopen schools, one, the Boulder County public health metrics, and two, the slow vaccine rollout, are no longer issues and you can reopen schools before spring break. The decision is actually solely yours because you are in charge of our district. Regarding public health, I have an email exchange between myself and Jeff Ziyak where he states metrics to quote, "bring kids back full-time," end quote, referring to opening schools fully. We met those metrics over a week ago, which you are aware of. I'm also told that 3,000 teachers will actually be able to be vaccinated in about six weeks and that many are already ahead in this process because they're getting vaccinated elsewhere. Vaccines are not required for more school, per CDC, and based on your decisions for our elementary schools. Our county is in great shape. It's outrageous to continue to keep teens at school for two days. This program is obviously a huge failure with only 60% of high school students actually electing in-person. This is feeling like it's becoming a shell game because I think it is one. You can get teens back in school full-time, especially with suicides and this drug use we're hearing about. This is all tied to the failed schooling program that you've put forth for teenagers. If you want to improve mental health, get kids back in school. St. Brain Superintendent Don Hadad said his hope is full five days of school as soon as possible. And Rob, you said you would follow. Please get our kids back in school.
Okay, Sean Howe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Board and Superintendents. I am a parent to a middle school student in our district and I'm here tonight to tell you that your continued inaction is causing unnecessary hardship and suffering to our secondary students and their families. We have met every single published requirement to offer more in-person learning at the secondary level. Jeff Ziyak stated in emails to parents that he supported full in-person learning after two weeks in orange. Since then, the state dial has changed. Boulder County is now yellow. The recommendations for K through 12 at yellow are clear: in-person learning. Our incidence level today is approaching 100 over 100, 100 out of 100,000, the requirement for blue, and our positivity rate is already there at 3.1%. How on earth are our secondary students still stuck at red? The statement that you will work closely with your partners in public health seems a bit disingenuous at this point, especially considering that St. Brain, working with the same health department, has found a path forward. Kitty commented on all of the fine print in the CDC recommendations making it difficult to institute change. Does St. Brain not read the fine print? Above and beyond these statistics, teachers are being vaccinated at an anticipated rate of 1,000 per week. I celebrate this and wholeheartedly support the effort. This adds yet another layer of safety for our schools to open. In addition, once 70% of the over 70 population has at least one vaccine anticipated by the end of the month, our five-star business program will allow restaurants and bars to function one level lower on the dial. Concerns around new variants are not affecting our five-star business plans and they should not affect our plans to open schools. Please explain, Rob Anderson, with all of this information, why are our secondary students still at home in front of screens not allowed to rejoin their community? How can schools be red when the country, county is yellow? President Biden called the fact that our children are not in school a national emergency. It is time for you to feel some urgency, Dr. Anderson, to return our kids to the classroom. Please release a plan to reopen schools for the fourth quarter.
Okay, Kim O'Brien. Kim?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. I'd just like to thank the school board for allowing our voices to be heard. It's very much appreciated. I'm also a parent of two students in BVSD, a middle schooler, seventh grader, and a 10th grader in high school. And like many parents that you've heard this evening, I'm standing here respectfully in front of you all with a group of concerned parents behind me that feel that there's a lack of action, leadership on BVSD's part to return middle and high school students to full-time in-person school immediately, providing them the same opportunities you've given to elementary students. I know there was a statistic out a few months ago about how elementary students don't spread the disease as much as the middle and high school students, but those metrics have changed. As of today, as I'm sure you've heard earlier from Jeff Ziyak, our positivity rate is at 3.1%. We are in the right direction, not heading there. We've been below 5% since December. Conversely, alcohol and opioid overdoses and suicide attempts in Boulder County have skyrocketed. My son's friend at Fairview took his life this past month. It seems that the data set that BVSD weighs more heavily on, the positivity rate far outweighs the mental health costs of our children. BVSD has made great strides in their layers of protection. Parents have had to do a COVID check before school. New filters and filtration systems have been installed in the schools. Contract tracing is engaged. State has supplied the school district with PPE. Social distancing and masking are the norm. Remote learning was never meant to permanently take the place of in-person learning. Some at middle school announced today that they're going back in person three days a week starting next week. Our high school students had five total in-person learning days last semester, less than 20 for the year so far. It's erroneous to think that the end game of positivity rate of COVID will be 0% or will always hover in the blue, green, or yellow. Two of our three metrics are in the blue as of today in Boulder County. With online school an option for parents who feel that it's unsafe for their children to return full-time, you'll definitely have fewer students in the classroom. My son's classes have four kids, four kids in their classroom. You can keep plenty more than six feet distance. Why are you waiting four weeks in between vaccinations? 30% of the vaccinations are being put aside for school districts every week. Like I heard earlier, without hearing any plans, dates, or response to any emails that I've sent, I can't help but be suspicious. Why have private schools been so nimble? Why are they open full-time? Do you need parents to raise money for?
Justin Spring.
Hi there, this is Justin Spring. I'm a resident of Louisville. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I have two children in the district and wanted to speak to you tonight about middle school sports. I've had an opportunity to engage with Donna. She's been very kind and with a few others in the community. Sports bring tremendous mental and physical benefits to our children. They also help prevent chronic disease, prevent high blood pressure, and help us reduce obesity rates in the community. I learned recently that adolescents who play sports are eight times as likely to be active as adults, thus continuing these health benefits well into adulthood. Sports contribute to career success. They help our children build self-esteem, learn about goal-setting, and build leadership skills. The nature of the pandemic clearly has changed everyone's lives and our children are spending crazy amounts of time in front of screens. We all see this, we all feel it as parents and educators. So, let's do everything we can together to create more opportunities to balance this by providing middle school sport opportunities for our children. The high schools are doing a good job with this and I keep wondering, why isn't middle school, particularly outdoor sports, which seem pretty safe right now? The seasons are short at middle school, less than a month long, and I'm hoping this would not be a big lift to make this request of the district. Thank you for listening.
Okay, Catherine Houch. And forgive me if I mispronounced that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much to you all for allowing us to speak. I first wanted to just thank Connor Scott, what a tremendous thing to come out as a high school student to share with us all this really important information. Nobody has a lot of voice to be than students. I am urging you to please open our schools 100% now. We don't have time. We don't have four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks to wait for teachers to get their second vaccination. That's not what this is about. Plenty of us work out in the community. We have, we take measures to be very, very safe and be very careful. I work with people in close contact. Therefore, I am so responsible the rest of my life. I don't socialize with others because I owe it to the people that I see, the clients, the patients that I see, to be extremely careful in other aspects of my life. Our kids, I am so worried. We have such mental health challenges right now. If we truly are here for our children, and we all are, if our children are most important, they need to be in-person now. I trust and believe in our BVSD, our schools, our teachers. Casey Middle School, where my son attends, they're doing an outstanding job with protocols in place. Kids can rise to the occasion and are. They walk the hallways, single file, they're in a one-way lane. It's safe as can be. It's low risk. We, we have to get our kids back in school. Understand this, some kids physically are safer in school than they are at home. Understand that there are kids at home every day who are not safe. Schools are better. We have outstanding schools. Please, please show leadership, get them back in school now. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay, and on our non-agenda items, we first have a student speaker, Benjamin Easton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Easton. I am a third grader at Ryan Elementary. I love, I love the soft start at Ryan Elementary. This gives me some time to arrive to school. I would love to have a soft start right here. This way, if I go to school fast, I can play with my friends. I love playing outside and it makes me ready to learn. And if I sleep in for the next 10 minutes or if I'm not motivated to go to school, I can have a bit more time. I would miss the early morning play with my friends and I would have slept a bit more. I would love a soft start maybe for 30 minutes from 7:45 to 8:15 a.m. This would be the best compromising solution for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, Florence Bouquet.
Hi, so I'm a parent of a third and fifth grader at Ryan Elementary. I hope you all have heard and read that a lot, a lot of parents are complaining about the new bell schedule for all elementary schools. The reasons are numerous and diverse. Too early for kids, some people have long commutes, increased challenge in the morning routine, no diversity in the school choices, not all kids need additional instruction time, no transparency in decision-making, et cetera. BVSD's reason mentioned in the May special meeting, at the 1 minute 10, Dr. Anderson's words were, "under the lens of transportation." But actually, it's under the name of equity, as he says, in the expense of diversity and students' learning or family needs. Transportation ends up to be cost neutral and affects a subset of families, for the better or for worse for them. So, I'd like to propose a reasonable compromising situation, solution that would help all, all parents, including those who might actually want this early start. The solution is to provide a standardized soft start from 7:45 to 8:15. And the soft start means parents can drop off at any time during this period. Meanwhile, students would enjoy an early morning recess if families need to move on with their day. It also would allow time for those longer commutes and it would certainly satisfy the large, very large number of families who just need those 10 more minutes in this morning routine. Recession outside time and unstructured play has shown, been shown by research that it's extremely beneficial for kids and increase the students' readiness to focus and learn during their morning co-instruction, which is BVSD's priority. To address the Wednesday late starts, just switch it to an early release. A regular morning start, five days a week, parents who might already need afternoon care will just have that ready. So, the standardized soft start of 30 minutes will provide the flexibility that parents and students need and yet would allow for the new bell schedule. So, thank you for your attention and we might hear from you for more. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our public participation. And now we can move on to board communication. So, Richard, do you want to start?
Thank you. I want to thank all the parents and the students that took the time to speak with us tonight. Couple of things that came to my mind as I heard the students and the parents talk about the mental health issue, especially around the THC issue. And I kept hearing that, "We're taking the lead, we're taking the lead." I'd like to ask Rob the question, how are we taking the lead? Do we have something cheering already in terms of what we're going to do to combat this THC issue?
Well, can I jump in? Can we save that question for when we talk about the resolution since this is just board communication?
Ah.
Thanks.
So, you threw me off, Tina, thanks a lot.
I'm sorry.
The... I'll come back.
Yeah, and I, let me just explain why I did that so that's clear to everybody. So, board communication is an opportunity for board to communicate out. It's not a time to have discussion among ourselves or with staff that's not noticed on our agenda. on our agenda. And so, and so it's really not a Q and A time for Rob, and I feel like we need to respect that because so many different topics can come up during board communication. It's really important that the public has noticed about it, so.
I appreciate that, Tina. I appreciate that very much, and I, and I failed to look at the board resolution, and I saw it now, and I appreciate the board resolution. Thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're taking the lead now. Thanks, appreciate that. The other issue that I want to talk about is the bell time, and my, my, uh, now that you mention in terms of not asking Rob questions, I guess my concern is, what are we doing with the bell time, and where are we with the bell time? And are we getting any reports in terms of what parents are saying based on, on the communication device that was developed for them to communicate with the school district around bell time?
Okay. Kathy?
I join my fellow board members in thanking the students for stepping up and the parents for sharing their concerns. I'll reiterate on the getting back to school full-time, what I said in prior meetings, which is, I think, without exception, that is our goal, that we are doing it under the guidance of Boulder County Public Health, and I think you heard pretty clearly tonight that the plan that we have in place is the plan that they have supported and endorsed, and I am fully supportive of continuing to follow their guidance and to follow Rob's guidance into a phased approach, because I don't think if we rush back and then end up having to go back into quarantines and all that does any good for our students' mental health, our teachers' mental health, or the consistency of a program. So, we hear you. I don't want you to believe that because we're following this, we don't hear you. We read the emails, we listen to you, we share your heartbreak even when we don't know the students who are suffering. This has been a really challenging, emotional, hard time for every single one of us, and, and we will get through this together. I really liked the quote that they put on one of the slides about how if we want to get through this, we have to stick together, so I'm hoping that we can do that as we see our way through to the end of the school year. So thank you so much for taking the time to come and talk to us. I have to admit, I have never, I even wrote it down, ever heard of dabbing, shatter. It sounds terrible, and when we get to the resolution on pot, I think we can talk about that a little bit. So I just have three quick things. Today, I was able to attend the audit committee meeting, and my kudos as always to Bill Sutter and to his staff, because as, as we will hear, we are on track, doing well, and the accounting nightmare of all the different pots of money coming in, sorry, no pun intended there, coming in from the federal government and all of that, I think has been managed really well. So I, I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I will look forward to continuing along the road of positive information coming from our accounting staff. So I also was able to listen in to the DAC and the evaluation of the testing we want to do around iReady, iStation, and I can't remember the third, and the reason I bring it up is that I was completely, again, so impressed with the quality of our staff, Rob, the questions that were asked by the teachers, the concerns that they had, their knowledge of the different testing systems, the time they took to try to evaluate which system is the best and why was really impressive. And I was really, really impressed with the, the contribution by parents and by staff, and the way Jonathan ran the meeting to make sure that every voice was heard. It was a really encouraging presentation, and I look forward to hearing what the recommendation is for which testing we want to have going forward. And then today, as part of Belonging to Casby, they had an open meeting with Speaker Garnett, who some of you may or may not know, his father was on the school board many years ago, and he talked about how he had to have a special private line. They didn't have Zoom. And I was impressed with Speaker Garnett's willingness to have conversations around the assessment and the testing, and his openness to continuing to have conversations at the Capitol. I think he sees fault lines already around the assessment issue in CMAS, and was encouraging us to have conversations around that. So I was grateful for him taking the time to talk to school board members. I think he does have a deep recognition of the role that we play because of the growing up in Boulder Valley schools, and also growing up watching us down on the school board. So I am encouraged by his leadership, and I hope we can continue to partner with him as we navigate these kind of interesting waters ahead. So I think that's all I have, so thanks, Tina.
Okay, Donna?
Um, yeah, I just want to thank all of the parents that came forward tonight on all the topics. It's been too many meetings that I get very teary-eyed and emotional, because I've shared before, I've experienced suicide that has directly impacted my own family, having been the person to open the suicide letter. But, um, but some of the things are related, that I'm glad we're going to address the THC issue tonight, and the, um, the issue of drugs in our community, and, and sometimes kids out of boredom, and out of frustration, and out of too much screen time, and not a set schedule, are, are turning to these drugs, and I think we need to hear that and address it, and get our schools open, try to look at the metrics, and see how soon we can get kids on a, on a schedule where, I, I know teachers have called me directly, and they're, they're saying, "Bueller, Bueller, where are you?" And, you know, the kids are, they, they turned on to tune in, but they're not really tuned into the class. So it's hard without our schools being open to, to have that personal connection. And as some of you know, I was Director of Special Education for Dakota Ridge Academy, which was the umbrella school under Boulder Community Hospital, and the kids that were sent to us were, a lot of the times, kids having drug issues and problems, and problems at home. And those drug issues oftentimes coincided with a lack of cognitive development and a lack of even motivation. And our kids don't realize that, and they're not seeing the data on, on what's happening and what can happen to them, and I think we, we need to, to address that. And, and I thank the, the person that came forward speaking about sports. I mean, to me, being involved in track and, and having those sports outlet has been a personal, made a positive impact on my own life, and I know it does for our students. I, I thank Florence for coming forward with the concerns about the bell schedule, but, and, and I was very impressed that she not only put forward the concerns, but also that she put forward some possible solutions that I think we, we really need to stand up and hear. And, and I thank Connor and little Benjamin for coming forward and giving us a student's perspective on, on what's happening in our schools. So, that's all I have to say until we get to the various resolution, or the, yeah, resolutions that we're addressing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, so, again, reiterating others' thanks for the folks who came to talk to us today. I have to admit, I had not heard about high potency THC until I heard something about it this week with, and I wasn't paying close attention, but it was either our legislature or some other one wanting to limit it, which I absolutely think they should. I'd never heard of, what is it, shatter and dabbing, and I went online, and the very first thing that popped up on Google was a website that starts "Dabbing bursts onto the scene as an exciting new way to use cannabis extracts to take advantage of the flavor and potency of cannabis oils. Our guide to dabbing has everything you need to know about how to dab." That's kind of concerning to me, considering what we have heard from the parents about how serious this problem is, so I'm glad we're addressing it. And just want to say the other thing is that I have come to realize that my experience with my children in terms of getting up and going to school apparently was not the norm. My kids, they, you know, I was dying for them to have an earlier start, but that doesn't seem to be what everybody else is experiencing. So I do, you know, hope that we can revisit this and, and see what we can do to come up with a good solution to keep the day equal, but also address parents' concerns. And just one other thing, I didn't say that there was fine print from the CDC, I was asking if there was fine print from the CDC. That's all.
Um, Lisa?
Uh, sorry, there we go. Yes, thanks, thanks to everyone who spoke tonight, in particular Connor, thank you for starting us out. Benjamin Easton, if you're still listening, you did an excellent job, so thank you so much. And Avani, I wanted to say, I, I know I've spoken with several former students who've gone through your natural highs program, and who just have nothing but excellent things to say about that work, so thank you so much for, for all that you do there. I've had a chance, in the past couple of weeks, to speak to lots of folks about the early bell day at my school Eisenhower, and at other schools across our district, and to share some of that feedback with, with Rob, and to talk a little, and I know we're not discussing any of this on the agenda tonight, but I am looking forward to when we do, and I know that, I can definitely tell that everybody's working hard to try and find solutions that work for our whole community. So I, I look forward to us having that conversation in the future.
Okay, Stacy?
I too want to thank the speakers, especially Connor and Benjamin. It's always great when students come. I had the opportunity this morning to be at the State Advisory Council for Parent Involvement in Education meeting. I was the chair of this group for many years, but now I'm the Casby representative, and what I want to share about that is Boulder is far beyond most districts when it comes to family and parent engagement. I know sometimes it might not feel that way, but we are, and I just wanted to share that. Given the conversation we have this morning about the research that shows engaged parents, when a parent is engaged, their student does their homework more, is, their attendance is higher, and all sorts of other things, and we are, the, our district is a leader in this, for sure. Also, I wanted to share that on Thursday, I'll be facilitating a small group of parents, I don't know exactly how many, 10, I think, around the assessment pause question that we'll be talking about with the, the resolution later. It's part of a bigger group called the Parent Advocacy Network that I don't know a lot about, so I don't want to share too much because I don't want to say the wrong thing. But once I have more information about that, we can share it for anyone who might be interested. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I'll chime in and just extend my appreciation to all the parents, and especially the students who showed up. Again, it's always a pleasure to have our students here. And again, to reiterate some of what Kathy said, we're working toward more in-person. We do have all of our schools open to in-person learning, I think now, just increasing the secondary days, and it was, from my perspective, a really encouraging presentation from Boulder Public Health and from the staff that were ready to open, and if everything goes well in the next few weeks, I, I would assume we'd go in a positive direction there. The, the other pieces, just on the THC, I'll, I'll just make a comment that the issues with drug use in, where, in the area where I'm familiar with, the city of Boulder, and talking to the parents that I know, having two kids at the secondary level, started way before the pandemic. So, and it's just really important to stress, and stress again, the problem will not go away when the pandemic ends. So we are, if you recall from our presentation from mental health, a couple of weeks ago, we're, you know, 48th in the state in terms of mental health resources. We, we have had this issue for a long time. From what it appears to me, some of these marijuana drugs are certainly gateway drugs, and now we're all aware of the drugs that are laced with fentanyl, that have been having a really negative impact on our young adults in our community, and if you haven't seen the warning from Boulder County Health, please Google that and make sure you are talking to your kids about what is out in the community right now, and the incredible negative effects of fentanyl-laced drugs, and what they're having on some of the young people. So that's, it's really, really important, and I know that we've been carrying that message as well as the school district. So, and, and again, that's something that had started on both coasts and finally came into Colorado in the last couple of years, as a more prevalent drug, and of course, a more dangerous with many, many more negative outcomes. So our next item is an information item, and this is 6.1 Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan Update.
Tina?
Yes?
Will we get a comfort break after this?
Um...
I just need like a five-minute break.
Well, then I, then let's take it now.
I do too.
Okay, is everyone okay if we take a break until 8:30? Eight, 8:35?
8:30 is fine, I don't need long.
8:30, okay. Perfect, we're all back? All right, Rob, do you want to continue on with 6.1 Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan Update?
Absolutely. Board President Marcus, board members, very excited to present to you all and give you all an update on where we are with our strategic plan Altogether for All Students, as I'm sure the board and the public know and understand. The last, last semester, we weren't able to engage and update as much around the strategic plan with everything happening with COVID-19. I'm here to tell you today that I'm very excited about the direction which our strategic plan is going, and how that work can really serve as a guiding light for the work that we need to do as we begin to roll out of this pandemic and begin to, to really live in a new normal in our school system. And I believe Sam is, is driving the deck, so Sam, if you can move forward the next side slide. So as we think about where we're, what we're going to talk to you all about tonight in regards to this strategic plan update, we'll be talking about something we refer to as an instructional infrastructure, and really, how do the pieces of, of the systems within our district come together to support our students and support learning for all kids to make sure that we're reaching our goals that we've established in our strategic plan? And as we think about that, and we think about the place that we're in, it's, I think, important for, to review with the board and our community, what are the issues that we're facing as we begin to recover from COVID-19? Next slide. Board members, these, these are, these slides are not news to you and should not be news to our community. We've been talking about these over the, since I've been here over the past several years, and these were items that were readily discussed with me as I interviewed for this position as superintendent. We have historic achievement gaps that are longstanding, and I, every indication lets me believe that those are continuing to grow as we're working through COVID and, and this pandemic. We have opportunities gaps in our system, where not all kids get the same opportunities or get the opportunities they need to succeed, and we have systemic disproportionality as we think about discipline. We talked a lot about that over the past six months, access to advanced courses, identification for special education. These are big problems that our school district is facing and has been facing, these issues that have been exasperated by, by this pandemic. Next slide. Just as a reminder to the board and the community, the achievement gaps go back as far as you'd wish to like, or wish to look. I, I believe that they go back 15, 20 years, and as I, as I study previous strategic plans in this district and previous efforts, many of these gaps, and achieving equity and closing these gaps, these gaps have been goals of, of most superintendents that have been here. And as we think about that focus, and then we wonder why we have not seen change, I know that that is certainly a point of frustration for this board, and a point of frustration for this community, and it's about time we start doing something about it. And, and so as we think about the strategic plan that we'll be talking to you about today, we're talking about pretty big systemic changes that are going to get at the core of what you need to do to begin to close these gaps. Next slide. And so at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Sam Messier, who's going to talk to you about some of the details of the work that's been going on over the course of the past 18 months, and talk to you about how this is going to reflect in our school system starting next year, and then I think she'll turn it over to me at the end. We have a slide where we're trying to bring all these elements together in a way that, that hopefully makes some sense. So Sam, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and thank you, board members. It's a pleasure to be presenting to you this evening. I really believe that we're at a unique turning point in the evolution of our systems in BVSD, and our ongoing efforts to close the achievement gap. Based on what we've learned from educating students and supporting staff during the pandemic, based on what we've learned from our work at Alicia Sanchez, Columbine &amp; Cole through the University of Virginia Partnership for Leaders in Education, and based on the work with every school through our strategic school support process, we're poised to do some really important work that I think will lead to transformational change. So we'll be focusing on aligning our systems and structures- and structures to ensure that we're providing high-quality and culturally-responsive instruction to all of our students that's aligned to a common scope and sequence. We'll be providing a district-wide balanced assessment system that includes assessment tools that'll help us identify the academic needs of all students. And we'll build resources and structures that will very importantly support our teachers and our administrators as they work to use data, identify achievement gaps, and adjust their instructional practice. So, we really believe this is the right time. The achievement gaps in BBSD are increasing as a result of limited in-person learning opportunities for the students who most need It's important that we be consistent, that these consistent district structures are critical to closing achievement gaps. Without a common instructional sequence, without the ability to access the right supports at the right time, without the ability to analyze quality student data, the gap continues to grow. And I believe that this is the right time to act on this and move towards finally putting some of these systems in place, the components of an instructional infrastructure that will help us to close the achievement gap and to do work that's really meaningful for students on a day-to-day basis. If we don't, the risk to our most vulnerable and marginalized students is simply too great. It continues to be our theory of action that we have great teachers and great leaders, but we failed as a district to provide them with the systems that are necessary to support their day-to-day work. We've identified the most important standards and the best order to teach those standards in. And the scope and sequence that we're creating will give teachers a year-at-a-glass curriculum map that broadly outlines which prioritized standards are taught when. Assessments will help further define what we want students to learn and serve as important checkpoints to determine if our systems are adequately supporting our teachers and our students. And we know that formative use of those assessments is one of the most powerful tools for positively impacting student learning. Our district assessment system will be aligned to our scope and sequence in a way that facilitates formative use and provides the data that's necessary for a robust tiered system of supports. All of this comes together in our common BBSD instructional model, which will serve as the basis for our district unit template. Our intent is to communicate clear district-wide expectations and give teachers discretion and support to adapt or create daily lessons to adjust to students' strengths and needs. These are the deliverables that we're committing to developing in advance of the upcoming school year. Our network teams are excited to dig into this work, and they're energized by the potential for this work to pay off in terms of student growth and achievement. So, we will be delivering on scope and sequence that will look like a year at a glance for all elementary grades and for LA and math for middle and high school. That year-at-a-glass will really map out the units, the broad units that'll take place in each content area throughout the year. We'll also be developing some units. So, we'll be focusing on developing units for quarter one at elementary for all of the core content areas, and at secondary for LA and math for the first quarter. In the area of assessment, we're going to be working on developing some assessment maps and really being clear about the definition of each of those assessments, their purpose, and how they're supposed to be used, and creating some common benchmark assessments. Of course, all of this has to be supported by strong professional learning and also include our work around the COVID catch-up The real work, of course, will happen at the schools. And many strategic plans fall short of their objectives because of gaps between the development of tools and the successful implementation of those tools at the building level with students and teachers. In order to avoid those gaps, we'll be investing in a coordinated set of structures to build the capacity of building leaders and provide ongoing embedded support throughout the implementation. This work will unfold through Strategic Plan Initiative 1C, led by our area executive directors, and will include the following components. So, part of this will be about developing leadership competencies to support our building leaders, a summer leadership academy that'll take place in June, some progress monitoring protocols, which are really focused on coaching of our leaders around how best to implement some of these systems in their buildings, and then our instructional leadership teams, which we're really excited about. So, these district, the district instructional leadership teams will be composed of a teacher leader from each school paired with a principal to really work on how to implement the strategic initiatives at their building. We know that our building leaders are amazing, but they can't lead this work all on their own. Any strategic initiative that requires teachers to change the way they do things benefits from engaging teachers directly in the development and in leading the implementation with their peers. Teachers have been critical participants in building our scope and sequence and our instructional model. And to lead implementation, we'll be identifying strategic plan teacher leaders at every building, who will receive leadership credit for participating. They'll also serve as an advisory group on the implementation of the strategic plan and collaborate with their principal to create and implement a professional learning plan for their staff. While these core systems are in development, we recognize that there are students with immediate needs. The board will hear an update from Area Superintendent Dr. Margaret Crespo and members of her team on the COVID catch-up plan on February 16. And our efforts would, of course, be incomplete if we did not monitor our progress as a district toward meeting the objectives that are identified in our strategic plan. The board will get an update on the strategic plan metrics on April 20. And at this point, I will hand it back to Dr. Anderson for the close.
Thanks, Dr. Messier. So, board members, that was a lot of information. I know that that came at you pretty quick. I want to just take a moment to frame up for the board and for the public how all of the things that we are planning to begin implementation for in August of 2021 will relate to the goals and objectives that we've set out together as a team and as a district through our strategic planning process. And if you were to study, research, and/or in practice, and again, you know, I've been in large districts that have taken on a lot of this work successfully, as you think about student achievement and student growth, there are really three elements that all of the things that we talked to you about today are related to and are aimed at. And that's increasing the quality, the quantity, and the intensity of instructional time between talented teachers and our students. And I would argue that regardless of what anybody wanted to learn, regardless of where they're at and where we want them to go, the right balance of quality, quantity, and intensity of instructional time with talented people is what will get you there. So, as we think about the work that we've discussed with you in regards to the strategic plan today, our prioritized standards are going to increase the quality, quantity, and intensity for all kids. By working with our teachers to develop these prioritized standards and scope and sequence, we feel that we have an incredibly strong framework that not only lays out high-quality standards that we know we need to focus on, but how long and to what intensities that we need to be making sure that we are teaching those standards. As we think about the instructional model that Sam talked about and the unit templates, they will also be framed in quality, quantity, and intensity. As we think about the equal school day, and I know that we have work to do, and we certainly appreciate the comments today, and we'll be coming back to the board with comments on how to make this work, by implementing the equal school day, by being able to provide teachers and kids 13 more days of instruction and providing hours and hours with professional development, we align with the quality and quantity of instructional time. By developing our leaders to work side-by-side with our teachers and help coach and develop, we are helping increase the quality of instructional time. By developing formative assessments and tools for teachers, it will allow them to know and understand how much and how intense of support students are going to need if they are not learning the standards in their first instruction from teachers. As we work on our multi-tiered system of supports, right, which is the level supports kids need beyond first instruction, whereas the first lesson that teachers teach to kids, that will also intensify quantity and intensity of instructional, of instructional time. As we talk to you about COVID catch-up plan, many of the initiatives and things that we're putting in there are connected to more time, more intensity of support and attention to kids who need, who just need more to make sure that they're learning standards. All of this embodied in both culturally-responsive best practices, and then a framework for excellence and equity, which is Strategic Initiative 3A, that really defines, creates clarity for schools that defines what is tight, what is loose, and makes sure that the schools who need us the most get the most support, and the schools that are doing really well have the flexibility to innovate and meet those needs of kids in different ways. All of those things, put together as part of this strategic plan, will be the things that help us close achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, and reduce disproportionality. And so, this is a high-level look at how these things connect to what I know what research would show are the key elements in making sure that we're doing what we need to do with kids to meet our goals. And it's important to note that you just can't focus on one. You just can't focus on quality and ignore quantity and intensity. You can't just focus on quantity and forget about quality or intensity, right? And you just can't focus on intensity without the other three. They are interconnected, right, in a system that is going to be what it is that we focus on to make sure that we're reaching our goals. And so, I wanted to end the presentation with that to try to connect some of those dots for the board. And at this point, Sam and I will stand by and our team to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, shall we start with Richard?
That was a good presentation, Sam. I appreciate all your work into it. When you're looking at quality, quantity, and intensity, and then you're looking at the equal school day, and 13 extra days of instruction a year, that sounds really good. But, I'm just wondering how effective adding 15 minutes to a school day is as opposed to adding 13 days someplace, fully 13 days. I don't know how effective 15 extra minutes is going to do to close the achievement gap and to provide more equal opportunity for kids. Just a comment, not really a question, but just a comment. Or maybe there is a question in there. How will 15 extra minutes provide that quality, quantity, and intensity to a school day, to the instructional
So, I would say, Richard, that, you know, from my experiences of when I've been in a classroom and delivering lessons to kids, that extra and extra 15 minutes makes a huge difference. There's a big difference between what you can accomplish in a 45-minute period and what you can accomplish in a 60-minute period of time with kids. I think that our teachers, as skilled as they are, given just an extra slice of time in the day, will be able to really fill that time with some meaningful instruction. And 15 minutes may not sound like a lot, but when you think about the way that a lesson is constructed and all of the pieces of it, it gives you more time to really address each component of the lesson so that you make sure that you're not shorting any component of that lesson. You know, one of the things that we often see is that people run out of time for the closure of a lesson when they do the summary and reflection, which is really where some of the most powerful learning takes place. And so, being able to really ensure that we get each lesson through to complete closure actually has a really meaningful impact on learning. And I believe absolutely that it's going to be beneficial.
Richard, is that it?
No, I just want to say that I spent 12 years in three different schools in Boulder Valley, and I saw what the last 15 minutes of school day looked like. And I'm just wondering, you know, really, really, is it going to be helpful?
And I would say, Richard, and I appreciate that comment and phrase that way. I think that, you know, you could question, what about 15 minutes? But, you know, one of the big pieces of the equal school day is getting everybody a baseline standard, right, of instructional minutes that we feel like they need, right? Now, that's not to say that 15 minutes is going to be enough for every single kid, right? We may have to do things beyond the school day, right, to increase those instructional minutes. But, if you were to ask me to do that today, right, there's no rhyme or reason to why the number of minutes exist in many of our schools today, other than somebody chose it at some point in time, and then it was hard to change, right? Now, there's a couple of schools that made some intentional decisions, right? But, from a systems perspective, to have a bar that we've set, that we said seven hours is the bar, but you're always going to need, some kids are going to need more, for sure, right? But, I think that it's hard to systemically understand what that is if you haven't set a level bar of expectation in regards to instructional minutes. And so, again, this equal school day, the reason we included this, this was part of the success effect, right? This was part of a previous strategic plan that we committed to working through, right? For eight years, our employees have worked through this to say, this is something at the elementary school level folks feel like they need as a standard across the system to accomplish what we're asking them to accomplish. So, any piece of what we're going to present to you in isolation, right, I think that you can ask questions. It's when you bring all of those pieces together, right, that creates the infrastructure and the support that our kids need, that our teachers need, and that our schools need.
Richard, are you done?
No, but I think if we're really going to be serious, I think if I was, if I was a year's student, but I'm not, I think I would add 13 extra school days to the school year. I think that would probably be more beneficial. That's just saying.
Okay, Kathy?
Richard, were you done? I wasn't sure. I don't want to jump in if you're not done. Okay. So, that's a lot of information, Rob, that we just had to go through without any chance to look at it ahead of time. So, I'm hoping we'll have some more time to digest this. The concern I will continue to have is that if we standardize this so much, I could teach high school math. And we all know that I barely made it out of elementary school math. So, I, a district unit template, common assessments, I mean, is there still going to be room for the art of teaching as opposed to just following a strict rule of this is what we need to do and this is when we need to do it? That stuff just makes me really anxious, and I just need more time to digest it. I know what you're going to say, but I'll let you say it anyway.
I'll let Sam speak, and then I'll speak.
That would make me anxious, too, Kathy, if I think that that was going to, if that was what was going to happen. So, I really appreciate that concern. And I think that not only is there room for the art of teaching, I think there's necessity for the art of teaching. Kids don't all come to us with exactly the same needs and the same strengths. And we absolutely need our teachers to be professionals in the classroom that are able to tailor the day-to-day lessons and day-to-day experiences for kids in a way that addresses those strengths and needs. So, I would never want to take that kind of discretion away from a teacher. When we're talking about the unit plans, we've had some really good conversations about that. And what we want to do is provide sort of guidance around an outline of the unit that breaks it into big chunks, but really give teachers a lot of discretion over what actually happens on a given day. We're going to build out examples that they can use and that they can draw from, but they will be able to make some decisions about where they might need to swap out a lesson for a particular day or reteach something in a slightly different way so that students can master it. So, you know, I think that in any system, you have to leave some amount of flexibility for teachers you have to leave some amount of flexibility for teachers to address the needs of kids because kids are not all alike. They all come with some really unique needs.
I, I'll just second what Sam has said. I, I think that I need the, board members, I need to be incredibly clear on this, right? You know, what we are, what we are developing is designed to support the excellent teachers we have, not to stymie their creativity or to put them in a box that they don't feel like that they could be successful. I think that, you know, the, the challenges, as a, the systemic challenges that we faced, right, is that teachers across our system, ha- they haven't even been teaching the same standards, right? And when you think about the way that a curriculum moves, a curriculum moves, right, you know, um, as, as we think about how, how it, it moves vertically, and we think about one in three kids in our system doesn't go, doesn't go through a, just a feeder pattern, right? Kids have choice and they go all throughout our system, right? Now, some systems have mobility issues and challenges, right? With, our mobility is different. It's a mobility of choice, right? But we do need to have consistency. Again, the standards that, that, that we've prioritized, we were selected by teachers. We had teachers from every single school participate as part of this process. These aren't standards that we developed and said, here's what you're going to do, right? The instructional model was developed with teams of teachers, right? Understanding, helping, and advising us, right? I, I do, you know, to the extent that we have to create some systems to support all folks, right? You know, the delicate balance of creating enough structure to support everyone, right? Without, without boxing people in, is, we feel like that we've threaded the needle. Now, that being said, n- nothing's perfect, right? Um, we'll continue to work with teachers and, 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 and work with schools to refine these resources over time, right? But the general idea of creating a strong instructional infrastructure, you know, I would say that if you pick a researcher, pick a, if you were to do a meta-analysis of research, right? Not one research study that, you know, but all of the research studies around what allows you to close achievement gaps, what allows, allows kids to grow that have not grown in other systems, these are critical components of what that needs to be, right? Which is why the research that we did, as we went through the strategic planning process, led us to this place.
So, I don't want to take up any more time tonight. I just have two quick questions. Can we get some more conversation later about common assessments? Because when I hear that, I remember the years we spent trying to come up with a ninth-grade algebra test, and I'm not sure that that helped our achievement gap much. So, um, can we cut, circle back around to that when you have more information?
Well, formative assessment and common assessment are, are two different things, right? Like, and, and if you don't have everybody teaching the same standards, right, it's really difficult to have these types of common assessments except for at the end of the year, right? And even if you have them at the end of the year, you haven't set expectations for people on what standards they've taught and how long they've taught us, right? So, when, when teachers who have all decided to do that differently, think about this. And, and in some schools, teachers were doing it differently within the school, and then you give them an assessment where there's items on the assessment that were aligned to the standards but might not have been aligned to what people were, were, were teaching, right? That's an incredibly difficult task. If you have the same standards and, and you build high-quality formative assessment items and figure out ways in which teachers are, you need to leverage those, right? Like, like, the plan isn't to make, give everybody common assessments and degrade everybody out on how kids did, but formative assessment drives instruction for the teacher, right? Unfortunately, the high-stakes assessment movement has really ruined the atmosphere for formative assessment, which is key. It is key to high-quality instruction. And, and, and my hope is as we move forward, as we continue to push the envelope on the assessment systems in the state of Colorado and beyond, like, we as educators have to understand that and have to bring that back at the forefront. That great assessment drives instruction, and talented teachers with the right infrastructure, with the right assessment, the right supports, resources, quality, quantity, intensity of instructional, uh, time, that's how you accelerate growth. So, so I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll stop my, I feel like I'm getting on a soapbox.
The last thing is formative. That's what I'm picking up. So, we can have a conversation about that later. And then my last question, Rob, was on your last slide. Why is MTSS not part of quality? I think of MTSS as quality, and you didn't have the bar starting under quality, and the same for catch-up. Don't those have quality components? I just was.
I, I do, I do, but I think that the, the point I was trying to emphasize is that an MTSS system, right, like, so a multi-tiered system of supports is what you provide kids, once they've received that quality first instruction and they're not understanding standards or they're falling behind, right? And that really comes down to that more time and more intensity, right? Like, so if I have a group, I'm a teacher, and I teach the whole class, and five kids don't get the standard, right, I do a quick check-in, I pull those kids aside, give them a second dose in a smaller group, that's more quantity, more intensity. I think that's the point. Everything needs to be quality, and I think that that's important to understand. Everything needs to be quality, but when you're talking about the quality of first instruction, right? And I think that that maybe might clarify that a little bit. I think the point we're trying to make is, you, when you talk about MTSS and you talk about COVID catch-up, like, we're talking about more and more intense supports for kids.
That makes sense, thanks. I don't have any more questions. Thanks, Tina.
Okay, Donna?
Um, yeah, I, this is right up my alley, and so, I kind of, what I want to say is, nothing new totally under the sun by hearing all of this because we know that, that kids are on this trajectory that constantly, one year of school should produce one year of academic growth, be it reading, writing, math skills. And so, um, not to pat myself on the back, but as Walmart Teacher of the Year, one year, and in my graduate school studies, in doing my research under, how do you reduce the gap and, and close the reading issues that kids have? It, it, it was through not only early intervention, but data-driven, um, instruction. And, um, to Richard's point, I thought it was funny because it reminded me of a book I had on my, uh, on my desk at school called, uh, Filling the Last Fifteen Minutes. And, uh, there were lots of little tasks where you, fifteen minutes, you, you just needed it because the kids needed a break, and you needed a break too. So, there were fifteen-minute little, uh, fun things for kids to do and teachers to do. But, um, e- e- even in everything that was presented tonight, uh, some things not new under the sun are, are like our SMART goals that are supposed to be sustainable, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. And, and all of these are data-driven decisions. I hated it as, as special ed teacher for years and years to find out in eighth grade that a student is being diagnosed with significant learning disabilities, SLD. We find out that they're four or five years behind in reading and that they, uh, fall below the twelfth percentile, so we're going to give them more time and intensity so that we can try to close that gap. I think we, we need to do that early on. We, we can't wait until the middle school and high school years to find out what, how far that student's behind. Same thing with this year, as kids have dropped off, i- if they have. Some might not have, but we need to have data to show that where our kids are and, and what we need to do to close that gap, gap, whether it's differentiating the instruction or changing our strategies. And then, what I would do often is, w- we would, uh, take measurements, achievement measurements on their reading score and find out if they went from a three-point-two grade level in reading to three-point-six i- in a month. So, so can we close that gap? I appreciate everything that was said tonight, but, but the, the proof is in the pudding and, and how we can give that time and intensity and the differentiation to those students in need as soon as possible. So, thanks.
Okay, um, Kitty?
Yeah, I just have a couple, excuse me, a couple of things. Um, on this slide where it said COVID, I think it said, I can't remember because I'm not seeing the slide, but making up for COVID losses. Is that something that we're going to do during the school year? Or are we talking about having summer school for that?
We, we'll be presenting on that next week, and it's a little bit of all that. I, I mean, I, I want to be clear. It's going to be, we're going to have interventions starting, you know, as, as soon, as soon as this month toward the end of the year, over the summer. And then we're going to have to have interventions all throughout the next year and then see where we're at if we need to continue. You know, I think that Donna brought up an interesting point with this expectation of to, to get a year's worth of growth in a year's time. When you close achievement gaps, that's not what you're trying to do. You need more than a year's worth of growth. If I'm two years behind, right, and my instruction is designed for, to get a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time, I'll never catch up, right? I'll, I'll never get to grade level, right? So, as we think about the, the interventions and the, and the resources that we're going to push into that, that feeds into a bigger system, right, that is really designed about, how do we provide the supports for teachers, for schools, for kids that let us get that quality, quantity, intensity of instructional time to be, to allow a kid to get two years, three years worth of growth in a single year? And it can be done. It's being done across the country. We can absolutely do that here.
So, then that brings up for me, how does that apply to kids who are juniors and seniors in high school? Where, especially the seniors, they're not going to be with us as long as it might take, or is it completely different for high school kids? It determine, it depends on the classes they're taking at the Zoom.
Well, I, I think we can talk about how we're going to support high school kids in our, in our, in our presentation to you all next week, right? But it, it obviously has to be different, so.
And then my last question was, it, what it brings up is a friend of mine who's now retired from the district, but she taught fourth grade at Crestview, and she did a big unit on Shakespeare every year, and the kids put on a play. So, how would this more standardizing what we're doing affect that? I mean, she's not doing it now, but I think someone else is.
Yeah, so I think that, that, those are, you know, I'm not sure I would, I would have to look at the details of the unit and what standards it addressed. I think the important piece of when we talk about the scope and sequence is that we're really calling out which standards and which evidence outcomes need to be addressed during a specific time of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then providing some general guidance about some big instructional blocks to get there. Uh, I think it also depends on, for the school, which, um, level or, or tier of support that they're in from the district, whether they're one of our high-support schools. There may be less flexibility there. I mean, I want to be realistic about that because I think that those are, the, at those schools, we want to be a little bit tighter so that we can really make sure that we're helping the students at those schools, um, move forward in their academic growth. But at our schools with more flexibility, um, you know, there may be some opportunity to, um, to, uh, supplement or supplant or extend as necessary.
Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Lisa?
I'm okay for now. Thanks, Sam.
All right, Stacy?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to comment on, I don't remember exactly what it's called, the strategic team leader or whatever. Um, I really like that idea. It sounds like it's an opportunity to develop some more leadership. Um, so I was really glad to see that. I think that sounds great.
Okay. Uh, Donna, you want to say?
I've got a quick question, and Sam, maybe you can address it, or Rob. Um, class size, how, how is that going to impact some of the instruction and, uh, learning for kiddos?
So, I'll take this, right? So, as you think about class size, right, that impacts what? Intensity, right? The less kids you're teaching, the more intense, the more tension, the more interaction, the more engagement that can happen, right? Now, there's, there's a magic number, right? Like, I think it's under twelve, right, where that really starts to show an effect size, um, depending upon the research that you would see, right? But, but think not just about class size, but as we think about instructional model, right? If I have a teacher and I have fifteen minutes with the kids, do I spend forty minutes talking to all of them? Or do I spend ten to fifteen minutes with each group teaching the similar concepts? I think that, that class size plays a piece, right? But it's not the only piece, right? You could reduce class sizes, and if you don't focus on, on quantity and quality of instructional time, Richard's pretty clear. It's not going to show you the effect alone, but it's part of a system, right? It's part of a system when you put those things together, which is really where you can begin to start to accelerate growth, right? And exceed growth, um, um, in, in where you need to make sure that you're doing that.
Thanks, Rob. I think you answered that question for some community members. Thanks.
Okay, um, I had, uh, first of all, thanks again for giving us an update. I know that you had introduced a lot of these concepts before, including the scope and sequence, and also when we, um, actually adopted the strategic plan. I think we talked about, um, putting some more, um, delineation around what we teach when, and also the idea of assessment. So, um, thanks for giving us an update on that, um, plan that we had already adopted. Um, when we talk about teachers being involved and getting teacher buy-in, will this be a topic that comes into our negotiation with BVEA? Or any kind of commitment, or is that done in a different way so that we understand what the commitment and what the buy-in is from our teachers?
Well, I can speak a little bit to the fact that, that this group of, um, district instructional leadership team teacher leaders, um, really serves multiple purposes. I mean, one is to help lead the implementation at their schools, but the other purpose is to serve as an ongoing advisory committee to the implementation of the strategic plan. So, to really help us think through, how do we implement some of these things in a way that will be most successful and most supportive of our teachers in making the changes that we're asking them to make? Um, so I think that that is really going to help us, um, in our ability to make sure that we're doing this in a way that we're bringing teachers along and helping them feel successful with the changes that we're asking them to implement, and being really clear about why we're asking them to make these changes. I think we, we owe them a really clear rationale, um, about why the changes are happening.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, just to add on to that, like, changes like these don't happen overnight, right? Like, like, they, they will take time. I think to, to, to get to where you want to be, you have to have a roadmap that shows you where you're trying to go. And I think that this will be a journey, right? I think that when you make transformative change, right? And, and, and again, this is about creating the right systems to support our amazing people. Like, it will take time, right? It's going to take time, right? You know, it's, it's why this collaborative time, PD time, that we're proposing as part of the equal school day, the school day becomes incredibly critical. Like, teachers are going to have to help each other out with this. We're going to have to learn from them. They'll have to learn from us, right? All of this is, you know, you've heard this term professional learning community or collaborative teams, whatever you want to call that. It's folks, are incredible people working together, right? Around a topic that, a- as a reminder, board, we, we collected feedback from tha- over a thousand, um, teachers, right? As we developed this plan, this strategic plan. So, their feedback helped build this plan, right? It, it, change takes a while. Implementation takes a while. But we want to be there with the right levels of supports, right, and guidance. So, as we think about the future of the school district, um, we're going forward together. That's why the, the instructional leadership teams at the schools is so critical. Leaders need to be learning right next to our, our, our teacher leaders, um, in our schools to make sure that all perspectives are heard so we can move forward together. If this is, this will not be a top-down approach. If this be, if this is a top-down approach, it will not be successful. It's something we're going to have to do in regard, in working together.
Well, I really appreciate that you have such a close collaboration with teachers. I think, um, we do desperately need change in the district for the historical patterns that we've had, and it probably won't happen without some kind of significant change that we will notice and comment on. So, um, it's, that's a good thing, and I hope that it, um, it looks like there's a plan to manage it. So, that sounds promising from my perspective. Um, any other questions or comments on this part, on this, uh, update, board members? Uh, Rob?
If the board would find it useful, we could schedule some work session time to dig into some of this a little bit more, um, to build everybody's capacity and understanding in regards to the aspects of this. Um, and so, if that's something that you all would be interested in, we'd be happy to do that. We discussed doing part of that. We felt like the overview was the first piece, and then gather your feedback to see if that would be something, um, that, that folks would be interested in.
Yeah, I think we could do that, and we could make it an optional work session, you know?
I, I could say I would be, but I think I may be behind the curve, so, thanks, Rob.
Stacy?
Can we get access to that slide deck? That would be really helpful. Thanks. It was a lot of information.
Okay. Um, our next item is a legislative update. Uh, anyone want to talk about anything? Kathy?
It's getting late, and they don't start till next week, so maybe we can, since we have some resolutions, one of which addresses an upcoming legislative piece, that maybe we could postpone it. The only thing I would say is there is an assessment and a, a bill to look at our accountability and assessment and accreditation system that's full of a lot of issues and concerns that I hope we can address at a later time.
Okay, um, we might want to put that on the agenda. And, um, for the next meeting that we have, I took a peek at that legislative draft, and there are probably some language pieces we feel, have some strong feelings about. Um, all right, any other legislative items? Okay. Okay. So our next item is our action items consent grouping, I'll read them off. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, January 26, 2021 Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, January 26, 2021 Regular Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Douglas Elementary, 7.5 Approval of a Contract to Alliance Construction Solutions for the Renovation of Justice High School, 7.6 Contract for Employee Leaves of Absence and Unfilled Positions with Pro-Care Therapy LLC, 7.7 Grant Boulder Prep Charter of School Empowering Action for School Improvement EASI, Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.8 Grant Early Childhood Education in Community Schools Childcare Relief Grant CCRG, Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.9 Grant Planning and Program Evaluation Early Literacy Assessment Tool Grant, Colorado Department of Education 21. All right. Would anyone make a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, moved by Stacy, Dr. II, by Kitty. Any questions? Or I'm sorry, does anyone want to pull an, an item? Okay. Any questions about the items on consent agenda? Kathy?
Another question, I just want to say thanks to Rob Price, I saw that justice contract is on there, it's exciting that that work is going forward.
Okay, any other comments or questions? No, Laura, do you mind calling the roll? And this is to, for the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have three action items, the first one is 8.2, the Board Resolution 2106 on Standardized Assessments in 2020, 2021. Just a quick check, did everyone have a chance to read it? Yes, okay, then, we were thinking about reading it, but I don't think we need to in that case. And just a little bit of history, a lot of districts are making resolutions on assessment, and if you've read it, I think the important point to note is that our district is committed to accountability and transparency through assessments, and particularly formative assessments that we can use in the near term to help inform instruction and close gaps. But that it seems that a CMAS testing environment is going to be difficult to pull off, and the data coming from that due to the remote learning in our district, which is almost a third, is going to lead to data that we can't really use, probably not even in a directional way. So it, and it will cause a lot of planning and organizing, if you're, if you're not aware, CMAS testing takes an incredible amount of logistical preparation, and if you think about the hybrid environment, it even further exacerbates that, and, and probably nothing useful for us. The other pieces, we're already very well aware of our gaps, we've administered the tests for the last 10 years, and we know where they are, none, none of the results of the tests have changed significantly in that time period, and so that's where we are. So, yes, Donna?
And I, I, I agree with this, I do think that the standardized tests, many times it's a money-making opportunity for, for the companies that run them, but, but I do want to make sure that the community and our public knows that, that we will address the gaps this year, I think we've already clearly stated that tonight, that, that we will have the assessments that are not only valid but reliable, and, and that that information is passed from teacher to teacher, because I don't want, as I said earlier, for a student to be diagnosed with significant learning disability, because they fall in the 12th percentile or below, or three or four years behind, that, that we haven't addressed that this year, that we don't pass that data on to the next year's teacher. So that's all, that I wanted to make sure that as this resolution is adopted and presented, that, that we as a district have plans, if Rob wants to speak more to that, I just want that part known, it's not like we're giving this up, or pausing this forever, or that the communities and parents aren't going to have the opportunity to know where their students stand.
Point of order?
Yes, Kitty.
Don't have a motion on the table.
Really good point. Does anyone, could anyone make a motion to approve? So moved by Kathy, Dr. II. Stacy, it's really, because we couldn't get there, we shouldn't really be talking about it, so. All right, any other comments or questions, maybe Rob can address them. Kathy?
Well, I just, I appreciate staff taking the time to write a, a resolution that kind of reflects our values, and, and where we want to go, so I really appreciate the effort that went into getting this drafted. And I, I think like what, what Donna said, I, we've, are implementing some kind of new transition plan for our students that are transitioning from those key grades, and I think that might help address some of those issues. And I know that from the parents I've talked to, and the teachers I've talked to, they get a lot more out of parent-teacher conferences and learning their own student gaps than they're gonna, from a CMAS test, that they're not going to get the results until the fall. So I just think, I really appreciate the, the language in this, and the, the spirit behind it, and I'm totally supportive, and I also really appreciate the effort that we're doing to try to help our students as they transition in this key year without all of the supports that they might have had before that. So thank you, Rob, for doing that.
Stacy?
Yeah, I've, I've long said this at many meetings over the years, that I, I don't think as a district we communicate very well what the CMAS, whatever they're called that particular year, what the assessments do and what they don't do. And, and so that's just another reason why I support this, because I think especially in a year like we've had, they could be used for something that they shouldn't be used for. So I, I fully support it as well.
Any other comments or questions? Rob?
First of all, thank you, board members, I think this is an important topic, not just for this year, but for moving forward. I do believe that there's better ways that, that our state could be, could be approaching assessment. You know, my hope is that as, as a state, we have the courage to begin to start to have those conversations and think about what that could look like. I will say that on a call with Representative Nagus over the past couple of weeks, I did encourage him on behalf of the board to, as we're thinking about the priorities of our new Secretary of Education, that they think about increasing the dollars in the competitive grant process to allow for more innovative assessment pilots, that's something where those funds have run out. I do think it's going to take states like Colorado, districts like Boulder Valley, to jump into the gap here and try to begin to really think about what this could look like. Again, as a reminder, board, board members, we, and in, in response to some of the, the accountability frameworks for, for the state, you know, we applied and are participating in innovative assessment or project. And so I just think that, that this whole topic is something that is worth working on, and something I'm committed to working on. And again, like I said earlier, the cost to give CMAS this year is higher than maybe any other cost since, since high-stakes testing came into play, because we don't have the instructional minutes in front of our kids, and we're going to have to give those up in a play, in a way to give a criterion reference test, not a diagnostic test, it's a criterion reference test that will measure criteria that may or may not have been taught because of, of the pandemic, right? And we still don't have any measure on how to measure the learning loss from last March to last May, because those, those, those tests only test the, from, from August to, you know, toward the end of the year, and so, in any event, just my two cents.
Okay. So with that, is everyone ready to do the roll call, the vote? Okay, Laura, do you mind calling the roll on the motion to approve this resolution?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next resolution, again, did everyone have a chance to read it? Okay, so the basic premise is, when IDA was passed quite a while ago, the federal government had promised 40% of the cost incurred for special education services, we're now at a fraction of that being supplied, and we use funds from other, from the general fund to compensate for that while we try to stay in compliance with IDEA. The timing on this is, is probably obvious, there is a Congress, a Senate, and a President, and an Education Secretary that might be friendlier to this proposal, and the next step would just be to relay this to our local legislators, as well as our, our Senator, and our two US Senators, and our Congressman, Joe Nagus. So what questions do people have?
Wait, wait, I move.
Oh yeah, sorry, do we have a motion to accept, a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Right, second by Kitty. Kitty? Yeah, okay. All right, questions, discussion? Yep, Kathy?
So I support this motion, I hope that we can bring one in the not-too-distant future that relates to the state underfunding of special education costs. We are probably, we have been known to be last in the entire country for how much our state supports special education, and I find that a little ironic, because our governor, when he was in Congress, was one of the people who would bring forward full funding of IDEA, but I haven't heard any effort to try to address the shortfall of funding in Colorado. And so I hope we can bring something forward in short order that addresses the state shortfall in, in special education funding, because I think it contributes as much, if not more, to what we're feeling as a district. So thank you for, for bringing this up, because I think it's a critical issue.
Any other comments or questions? Kitty?
Yes, I support this fully. I am really outraged that Congress, excuse me, has never funded this to the extent they said they would. And, you know, back during the second Bush administration, and they had the no child left behind, and let's hold all the school districts accountable, when they're not even willing to fund us. And I think this is something that the public doesn't really, I don't want to say they don't care about it, but it's not something that is, something they latch on to, and I really wish they would. I wish our community and the public in general would understand that we're having to provide this education with, what, we're getting now 11% of it funded, when they're supposed to be doing 40, and it's just unacceptable. So, public, get angry, and, well, don't get angry, but, you know, right, the Congress, right, senators, right, everybody.
Thank you, Kitty. Any other comments or questions? All right, Laura, do you mind calling the, the roll on the motion to accept this resolution that Kathy so kindly made?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the last one came out pretty fast, we heard that there's some effort to introduce legislation to put caps on THC, you heard from various speakers today about this. As you know, we, we have been involved in a similar effort with the vaping in the city of Boulder, getting rid of flavored vapes because they were so highly correlated with negative outcomes for adolescents, and they were so readily available. This is a very similar issue, and I would argue probably with even worse outcomes for our teens. So what kind of questions and comments do we, and we have a motion to approve it?
I move, we approve Board Resolution, what is it, 2108?
Do we have a second? Stacy? Okay. So questions, who wants to start? Kathy?
I did a little bit of research, so when we passed this, we did not have any limits in our law, but Vermont, when they passed theirs, actually put the limits in the law when they passed it, so they have a limit of 30% for cannabis flower, and 60% for cannabis oil, and as we heard today, the limits that, that we have now are much higher. The Netherlands apparently were trying to, to model after some of what they did to limit the, the potency, and I can tell the board from what I've read, this is going to be an uphill battle. The marijuana industry is very well-funded, I'm not hearing support from the governor for others at the Capitol, so I think we need to be ready to be advocates to try to, to push this through and to explain why it's so important, because the marijuana industry is going to be very well-funded, and I don't think they're fond of this at all. So thank you, Tina, thank you for bringing this up for us, I think it's a really important issue, and I think we need to be paying attention to it as it goes forward.
Any other questions or comments? Donna?
I appreciate Kathy saying that, because I really think that, that, that there's a lot of things going against us with the money that's behind it, and so I think that's an important point to bring up, and also that more and more regulations and restrictions are being minimized, even as they're trying to open up home delivery, like alcohol delivery, and delivering it to your door, and, you know, when 18-year-olds can have cards and have a party with young kids, and when we find drug paraphernalia, you know, within walking distance of Boulder High, we've got to be concerned and rise up as a community and try to fight this, so, thanks, Kathy.
No, I agree, Donna, completely, thanks for bringing that up, I hadn't even thought about the home delivery piece, that's just shocking. I mean, I know we're doing it, but thanks for saying that.
I don't think we're doing it yet, I think Boulder City Council is taking it under consideration, so we, we may want to think about that as well, I mean, this is, the, the marijuana industry is really just like big tobacco 30 years ago, and they're just making a lot of money, and have a lot of interest in making it as accessible as possible, and also making sure that teens are engaged early and consume a lot. Anyway, all right, other question, Richard, did you have a question from before? No, okay. All right, do we, Laura, could you please call the vote?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and so as a board, we don't do a lot of, of resolutions, I actually don't, I'm not particularly fond of resolutions, but they do come in handy, particularly during the legislative session, when specific issues come up, and when we know legislation might be introduced. So what happens now is that we will send these resolutions to the appropriate legislators, and will also let our lobbyists know that our board has taken this position, and that the majority of the board supports this moving forward. If you change your mind as an individual, and you don't support the resolution anymore, that's fine, but just, I would just encourage you to speak as an individual, not as the board, since we have taken this position on these resolutions. So our next item is agenda setting, and, and I'll just leave it at that, we, we do this a lot. So any issues that people want to address, or want to put on our list for our next prioritization meeting? Nothing?
Well, I just want to follow up on Rob's offer to do some updating on work sessions, I don't know if that's agenda setting or not, I think that would be helpful.
Around the strategic plan? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. All right. So, anything else? Lisa?
Yeah, I think you had mentioned the idea of discussing, although you don't love resolutions, discussing a resolution around the undocumented early childhood education workers.
Unlicensed, I think, but possibly undocumented as well, right?
Yeah, unlicensed is what I meant, in, in, in the context of the undocumented, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just overall, can I just see a nod aheads, because then we could, since we're on a resolution frenzy, just kind of keep it up. Is everyone okay if we bring something like that back at the next meeting?
There will be a resolution coming up, or a bill coming up in terms of repealing 1009 and 1026, the acts, the two laws that were passed in 2006, that'll be coming, that'll be here shortly, and we'll be bringing a resolution around that, too, so.
Okay, and if you want me to help draft it, I'm happy to do that.
You bet, thank you.
Okay.
And I would, I'd be interested, but I really need to research more information on that when you ask for a nod aheads. I just want to know on unlicensed, would those facilities, those childcare, need to meet the same standards that a licensed childcare facility makes in, in order to, you know, to be on that, that prioritization? So, so I'm, I'm concerned, I just need more education on licensed versus unlicensed.
Okay, that's a good point, thank you.
If they're exempt childcare providers, they would have to meet those particular specifications.
Okay. Kitty?
Yeah, Richard, I don't know the laws you're referring to, that they're looking to repeal, can you say more about that?
Well, in 2006, there were two bills that were passed, that were really anti-immigrant bills, 1009, I believe, is Ten oh nine, I believe, is the law that denies any professional certificates or licenses to the undocumented community, yeah.
So I, this is sort of on the subject, there was a story on Colorado Public Radio today about unlicensed childcare providers, they didn't, I don't know if they mentioned their legal status, but a lot of them who were Spanish speakers, who are now studying to become licensed childcare providers, and it wasn't in the metro area, but it would be nice to have something like that happening, where they could do it online while they're still providing childcare, and they talked about how much they were learning about child development and all these other things that they didn't know before. So it would be great if we could get something like that around.
That's in the Roanoke area, the resettlement project, but also in the Denver metropolitan area, you do have the Providers' Advances Student Outcomes, that provides one hundred and thirty hours of training to the Family for a Neighborhood Childcare Network, one hundred and thirty hours, which is almost as much as a two-year degree.
That's great.
Okay, so I'm hearing one resolution that we might consider that has to do with the unlicensed childcare, and with a tie-in to some undocumented, and then the second is, is that, Richard, you might pass along something when you have more information about that.
Absolutely, that bill is in the draft stage right now, and they've got sponsors and everything, as soon as it's done, then I will bring it forward.
Okay. All righty. Anything else on agenda setting? All right, hearing none, I'd just like to adjourn the meeting, thank you for your time. Good night.